I'm sorry, I didn't bring my other laptop from home.
Yeah, I figured today's not a tight day with no air conditioning.
No.
Yeah.
I'm, uh...
Melissa, this is Sam Bushman.
Hi, nice to meet you.
He handles our GIS.
I'm already hot.
You're already hot. Yeah, we can get spoiled with that.
Oh.
It was so nice, it was right out of the ball fields, Hannah had that one, I was like...
Yeah, it was actually, yeah, I was surprised.
We had people, I guess Taos got rain. We didn't get squat.
Yeah.
We didn't, we had people in, they said, "Oh, we just came from Taos and it's just pouring down rain."
Yeah.
And it got dark, and then that's it.
Yeah.
And it's like...
You drove right out of it.
Well, Columbia, I guess the night before, had like over half an inch of rain.
Wow.
And we didn't get squat.
You all ready? Call the commission order, we have your minutes reports.
No, we do not.
The commissioner committee, that's not, sorry. The commissioner committee liaison reports, your announcements after meetings and events.
United Way lunch today.
Leadership tomorrow, Randy said he'll, I ran into him this morning, he said he'll send an email out. Told him I'd be there.
I'll show you.
No, I probably will not.
Okay. Sam, you are invited cordially to attend with us if you'd like.
I'm sorry.
7:30 AM at Capital Plaza Hotel.
And what is it, I'm sorry?
It's the leadership forum, which is city, county, state, school district, Lincoln University, chamber of commerce, go get together and update each other on what's going on. We do it once a month. Generally, with, pretty much without exception, it's the last Friday of the month.
Yeah, I've just got it on my calendar and show up when it goes ding. I don't even know which Friday it is. Just recurring all the time.
It's generally, generally, I mean, I don't, there may have been one time in some, maybe in December we haven't done the last something in my...
Sometimes in July or something we won't either if there's stuff going on. I don't, it's, I think it's always a pretty good meeting.
It's a very good meeting because you get to hear, you know, Modot will be there, or, you know, Kito will be there, various people will be there.
It's not been very well attended lately though.
Yeah.
It's kind of disappointing.
Anything else to discuss before we go into the budget discussions?
No.
Okay. You don't, you can stay if you wish, you don't need to stay, but we already keep it running.
That's fine.
If we need you to vote anything, we'll come over.
All right.
You're watching, I assume, we just have to say, "Hey, Betty, let's just go."
Betty, Betty, could you come over please? All right. Because Melissa was not able to be here to her budget presentation previously, welcome.
Thank you.
You know the routine, so without much further ado, the floor is yours.
I thought we just cut 10% off of her budget if they're not here.
But she had a good excuse.
Hey, I tried, I said I have a commission meeting and it wasn't a good enough excuse to get us to do it.
Do you need a note from us next time?
So anyway, most of my budget is either the same or reduced. Meetings, travel, I reduced 500, it was 2,500 last time, communications, I reduced about 550. The only thing I've added on here is the imagery, which I brought up earlier in the year. And I'm going by the square miles, the amount per square mile that we paid last flight, 125 a square mile. But I really doubt it's going to be that much. We will not be getting the MGA funding this year, as far as I know, because we don't have the channel that we used to have for them to push the money through. But there is a possibility that they could ask, want to purchase that after the fact. So, but actually, we've been working, Jason Moore's in at Boone County, and I have been, we went and talked to the Mid-Mo RPC about trying to get more partners together. The more partners, we have the more square miles, the cheaper it gets. And right now, it looks like we'll have a six-county area that we'll be partnering with. What we want to do, instead of doing RFP, we want to take advantage of the new state contract that's out for imagery. There are four pre-approved vendors, what we have to do is come up with a, and we already have a draft of a product, project assessment quotation for our imagery flight. And the target deadline, so that we can get all that information out to the vendors and get the quotes back, so that we can schedule it for next spring, the September 17th. So we would like to have some kind of a verbal...
When's the last time we flew?
It was 2010, and then we messed that one up, so...
Right, need to re-fly it next year.
But if we're going to keep on the same schedule as the other partners that we have, and this is, the reason that we did it every five years was so that it could coincide with the census every 10 years. So that was just kind of a way that we decided would be the best, to kind of keep it consistent.
How many counties are doing this now? Six?
Six. The ones that we have that we're talking to and...
I mean, it don't matter which ones, I just, that's good.
Yeah.
Because the more the merrier, I think.
How much farther down will that push, do you think, the per-square-mile number?
Um, well, I'm hoping, we got some preliminary prices from some of the vendors, and I'm thinking it was like 3,000 square miles plus. And so it's looking like it could be 90 to 130 per square mile. And actually, once they...
That's a big range.
Yeah. Well, once they start giving us their bids, and there are four vendors, it could, like I said, they could be trying to get competitive and also, you know, they would want to keep...
Is this 45, 750 based upon all of Cole County, or all of Cole County outside of Jefferson City?
Um, that was just Cole County, without Jefferson City.
Without Jefferson City, okay.
Yeah. Now, what other, and I don't know if you want me to go through all this today, or if you'd rather me set up another time to talk about it.
That's what I was going to ask, because we haven't visit, revisited, visited, whatever you call it, the GIS in a while, and I don't know if there's anything we need to do, but if we need to put this on the agenda and talk about it.
Well, if we've got to go out to bid in September...
Yeah.
Then it's not really next year's budget.
Like next week?
When would we, when would we be, when would we be entering the contract?
Well, the actual, these would just be to get the quotes back, but then we wouldn't be actually doing the purchasing until next year, so I believe it would be on next year's budget.
Do we remember when it was last time?
I can get the paperwork out.
I thought it was before the end of the year we entered that contract, so they could fly in spring. Could be wrong, seems like...
Do you have, I don't, I don't know if I have, let's see.
They like to fly with the leaves on the trees.
Yeah.
Without.
You've got to do it in February.
Without. They try to, they try to fly like, late February, early March, when there's no snow and there's no leaves on the trees.
That's what it was without the leaves on the trees. I thought with the leaves would be prettier.
I got a picture of my house, that they flew early with leaves on the trees, and you can't see anything except for just the open space. So you can't tell any of the terrain, you know, you know what my back of my house, like, you can't tell any of that from the picture because it's all tree cover.
They know what Public Works was talking about, that...
The RFP was...
They really like having that terrain.
Yeah, with lidar?
Mm-hmm.
Are they doing lidar on that this time, Melissa?
Are we doing lidar?
Or is this one going to have lidar?
No, um, I don't...
Are they still working on that? Possibility.
We've got our lidar already from the last flight.
Okay, we did have it on the last flight.
And we did contour, we did have contours and we got those for free, so...
Okay. That's what it was.
So, yeah, we really wanted to do contours.
So this is just photography?
Yeah, this is just the imagery.
Should I be worrying?
No, it's an old one. Yeah, I mean, the RFP that I have from the last time was from November 12th of 2009.
Okay.
So, I can, I can verify that, and I have to get back to you. So, as far as the imagery goes, you know, it'd be good if we can kind of, and if I need to come back and talk to you more about, you know, what exactly we're trying to do. The city has talked to a few people, like some of the electric companies and stuff, and one thing that we were thinking that we might try, which Boone County does this, is to get partners from maybe some utilities and such, to help offset the cost. And that's something that, you know, we might try to look at. I mean, I don't know that we'd get a whole lot of money from selling the imagery after the fact we gave it away, we give it away for free now, because, well, part of what we had was from grants, so that was kind of, and plus it's easier if you can just, instead of piecemealing it out and, you know, it's just kind of, there's lots of different ways to go about it.
I know at our MM RPC meeting, Commo Electric was kind of interested in the imagery.
Yeah.
So, anyway, so maybe Three Rivers might be interested, or any of the others.
And that was kind of one of our things that we had discussed, because the city, they are probably, their area might be probably the most sought after as far as people wanting that data. And so one thing that we discussed is if we just flew it as the entire county, that the county would own the data, it would own the whole imagery, and the city would be willing to work to try and help get partners, which if we asked them to pay 10%, we could get four partners that would more than pay for that area.
Yeah, I just want to add this to an agenda sometime where we can, that'll give you some time to kind of look up some of these questions and then...
I think that's a good idea.
Also, get ahold of Jen Popelmeier, is that how you say her name?
Spectrum Consulting.
And see maybe if there's any other grants out there that we can get. I know that, like you said, that one, we did have some grant money on it and...
Yeah, that was the MGA, and unfortunately, that's a federal grant, and...
That's what she did like that.
...the UHS that kind of funneled that through before, and that is not something that is possible now.
Yeah, but she can, that's what we're paying them for.
That's what they do, they work.
Look up and see what...
Okay, I'm going to go with you to get that number.
I'll say you can email any of us, or we can forward her information too.
Yeah, okay.
I might ask her if you wanted to sign that, or if he wasn't there.
Oh yeah, you weren't there?
Come up with some options that we could have as far as...
Usually she types apps in there, so I didn't look at that, and I didn't catch it on the other one.
They're getting distracted.
Other one. I might stick around for one second, let me see if I got her email address here real quick, and I can just get it to you now, as opposed to waiting.
Thanks, Chris, I didn't catch that.
Oh.
It's starting to stink, accredited for me. Sign me in, will you?
Yeah, I'm also going to be talking to the assessors association in October, doing a presentation about imagery, because there are a lot of new assessors out there that don't know very much about it. And hopefully, even the next time, maybe we'll even have more partners, so.
Jen, maybe.
Maybe she needs to take some alerts for a sec.
Pass them out.
I don't know, I was just biting my teeth. Anytime you hear the first part of that word, you're like...
And when you send her an email, just copy it.
It was fun at the Mac board meeting.
Sounds good.
After that, you can just go with it.
That was my...
She's very, they're very good to work with.
Okay, sounds good. And I'll get it on the agenda for future, and...
Just tell, I'll just find one that's not loaded down, and just tell it per one of us or the other, and...
And then the specific questions we need to answer is when the contract will be coming through.
Yep, got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa.
Okay, well, the last of these you see up there are the ones that we've got to talk about.
Yep, we're done.
So, that's okay.
You know how we are.
She doesn't find any humor in that.
So, there's the commission, I'll just show you.
Commission F drive, is that where we go?
Yeah.
Mainly for Sam here.
Now you go to commission.
Here's your organization chart.
Go to commission, go to commission.
So, all the departments on the right there are under you, and then Jill's account.
Well, you need to tell us where you're at there.
Oh, I was just showing Sam that organization chart.
I thought we had it on ours too.
Of the commission's department.
Commission budget 2015, that one, right? Uh, up, one, to the auditor. And then, next one down, department under the dress. There you go. Which one are you in now?
You're under the commission.
Commission, the very first one.
Yeah, we'll just do the first one. And then go to the XO spreadsheet.
Under which department?
Commission department.
Yeah.
I don't have that.
Can I not get you?
Yeah, you did. Go back one. Click on the other one, right there.
Okay, well, this, as you can tell, all the years up here, we're looking at the yellow that we need to submit to the auditor by September 1st. As you can see, that we don't make any revenue, I don't know if you guys can figure out any way for us to make revenue there, but we'll go to the expense. Actually, I did add this other budget here for you guys to consider. I was thinking about taking purchasing out of our venue, not out of your venue, still under your organization chart, but actually give them a, give her a budget. I don't know what you can think of that.
Fine with that.
We can look at hers first if you want to, if I go onto that tab.
Well, let's have the discussion of whether we want to do that or not. Do we want to have her as a separate budget or not? I mean, it makes sense to me.
It's becoming hard to track her expenses, her advertising for bid. We do submit the advertising for bid back to that department, but a lot of times to cut costs, she'll advertise together, and then we have to split the bill up. So, and I've made it to the point, because I know you're always, with purchasing, was to try to get everybody to buy into it, so anybody in general fund that do not have a budget for a publication, I've been paying it out of 127. Now, if it's a separate fund, Rowan Bridge pays their own, Edmas pays their own, Sheriff pays their own.
So if you share the bidding or whatever, you're going to bill her department, but then not her department, we bill each one of them separately, or split it up however we need to, and then that makes the accounting easier for both of you all?
Well, and I would like to keep it to the department if they have their own fund, but I'd rather not to budget in the collector for some one item he's going to bid, may or may not bid. Sometimes we don't know at the beginning of the year what he's going to bid, what he's not going to bid, so I'll just pay it out of 127.
Okay. My confused look is, because I'm not following, I'm confused.
But you want to take it out of 127 and put it in a purchasing department?
Yes.
So we would track the cost under her instead of paying it?
So we're going to track the cost for all purchases for all departments?
Within GR.
Just within GR?
And we're still tracking it within those other departments, but they have a specific line item to pay those bills. I don't want to assume the bills for other funds.
But are they, my problem that I have with that is that you're, you're putting all of Jennifer's salary and benefits and stuff under GR, when in actuality, if she's actually doing a lot more for other departments, part of that salary and benefit should be going against them as well.
I think, I think that's part of what our admin fee is.
Yeah. We charge those funds a 3% admin fee, and it's kind of like for my work, for anybody else that does countywide work, that's what that 3% admin fee is for. And I think what really came about was when we talked about doing purchasing differently, and maybe hiring another employee over there part-time, I just thought, I think it's time to put another budget out there for her, especially if we do think about that part-timer. I did put 25,000 in there for a part-time position, just a rounded, big old number there, and her salary, and then the benefits, obviously just social security on the part-timer. And then she does have this one company that we pay to keep her website up to date, and, which is a minimal fee, and I'd like to, her phone out there, which she's on the PRI, so it's not very much cost there. Publications, I did put that, that's her biggest expense. Give her a little travel, mileage back and forth.
So are we still talking about doing another department?
Yes.
Or did you just skip over that and go right to the budget?
That's her budget, if you would like.
Okay. But I'm just saying, let's finish talking about whether we're going to do this department. If this makes the accounting part easier, I'm fine with it.
I didn't ask, what do you think it's, what do you think?
But if it's, if we need to do it...
It just all depends on if you want to necessarily track those costs separately. I mean, she doesn't obviously have a lot of expense, so it's working right now to pay the publications out of 127, but you do have other publications that you guys paper out of there, you know, our financial statements and stuff that we have to advertise and this paper, so it would be nice to know how much the purchasing person is actually costing.
And I don't think that's a bad idea, being able to track exactly what that is costing us. Because at some point, if Jennifer finds a different job, or retires, or whatever, then you can go, "Look, we got 90 grand we're spending a year, are we getting that out of her? Do we need to get rid of the position maybe, you know, when we filled it?" I think it, I think it's been well worth its weight, so...
She's definitely a good fit, she's...
I'll defer to you all on the accounting part.
I like it, I'd like, I'd kind of like to see, I'd rather not see the publications split out amongst other departments, just because, I don't, from, from one person doing things and then sending a bill to another department, I just don't like that. I mean, the bill should come to her, and then maybe she could separate that out as to who that goes to, but, you know, sometimes with the maintenance, Greg will do stuff for the sheriff, and then the sheriff gets the bill, and he's like, "Well, I guess," you know, he don't know if Greg did that or not, and so, you know, I'd rather like to see it all come under purchasing, and then maybe...
We want to give you a true or false of the publications that are running through where, you know, the...
If you're okay with not billing sheriff out of his own fund for what he does, public works out of their own fund.
Well, I mean, we're, we're trading dollars, so it's, I mean, yeah, I mean, so we could take it out of his budget and, and put it under Jennifer's budget, but, I mean, it, am I, am I seeing that wrong? I mean, so we, we take all publications out of his budget and put them under Jennifer's budget, and then...
Which is his publication.
The sheriff.
And it's, we're talking about for bids.
Right.
We're not talking about other publications.
I was going to say, they, they have a lot of...
They have a lot of...
Right. Well, and for, they do the sheriff's sale, and there are certain, I mean, there are other things they advertise for.
Well, Rowan Bridge is the big one.
And that's under us.
But I think we need to take it out.
Yeah, but they have their own funds.
They have their own revenue stream.
So, if we absorb those, then we're going to pay for them.
The assessor.
I mean, I can look at it and try to pull out what is Jennifer's, what's not, but unfortunately, every time you put it out in that paper, it's $200, $300, so it's going to add up quick when she does 30-some bids for Rowan Bridge.
Tell her to make the print smaller.
Did you see the ordinance, the wastewater ordinance in the paper? It was a whole back page.
Yeah.
What?
Yes, yeah, I talked to Christie about that, she, she said they screwed up, so, anyway.
That'll be it.
And that was $3,000 or something.
I didn't know if that's what we had to put, was a full page? If we had to put the old ordinance, we just had to put that year's?
I don't know, I guess they needed something to print.
I forgot about that too, but I saw that, I thought, "Well, I wonder what this costs." And then, uh...
And they're the only game in town, and they got that stupid statute that requires you to do it.
Yeah.
Well, what do you guys think? I know we're kind of early on, and I know we're going to be switching to...
I think splitting makes a lot of sense, and we ought to split.
Okay.
You know, obviously, figuring out the advertising, I think that's something probably ought to get information before making a decision on it, but for purposes of sending it to the auditor's office, and I think, you know, all this stuff, we send to the auditor, she plays with it.
Yeah.
It comes back to us, and then we can do whatever we want with it.
Yeah.
So it's really, I, I mean, it's good to have ideas.
Right.
It's not, I think, as important when we send it up to be final, because we're going to get another shot at it, whereas, you know, other people have more urgency in getting it, because they don't get their budget back. We get our budget back.
I agree. I mean, I, I think it makes a whole lot of sense, I mean, a separate purchasing apartment, but, you know, just, just some way to, if you're making those purchases, it needs to come through you, and you need to submit that as an accounts payable, and whether we bill other departments or, or whatever, but...
And we have not triggered the statute yet either.
No.
Which, when we trigger the statute, you guys will end up, I mean, I don't anticipate us doing that in the next three months, do you?
No.
So it'll be something under your watch, probably you will trigger the statute and officially designate Jennifer as the purchasing agent for the county, and at that point, all bids have to go through her.
All purchases of the county?
All purchases, she becomes the purchasing department.
Which is...
So it's not just bidding, it'll become, you know, if people want to buy paper, they have to go through her, they will not be able to do it on their own anymore.
And you talked about a culture change here.
So, and that has been why, we got Jennifer in four years ago?
Yeah, no problem.
Does that sound about right? Jen?
It's been at least four.
We got her in, we got her feet on the ground, you know, there was a lot of angst about us hiring her, because there, she was going to be the purchasing agent, and was, you know, and it was going to take everything away from everybody, and we asked her, you know, basically the theory was, let's let her work with everybody, and when they're comfortable with her, it's not a big deal then. So at some point, it'll be time to flip the switch, because one of the issues we deal with is other people in the county who just decide to go buy stuff.
Yeah, I have that at the store. Maria's kind of the manager, and she, every now and then, I go, "Why'd you do this? I know, I know."
Yeah, and so, you know, and long run, I think it's probably really valuable to do that, I don't, I don't know where the point becomes...
There's just a lot of trickle-down to that, because if you enact her to be that, you almost need someone to be receiving every day.
Right. It becomes, it's more of a process than...
And I don't know that we want to go there. I mean, it's just...
I mean, you would, you would need centralized receiving.
Well, maybe, yeah.
I, I think at some point, you, I think at some point, the county will go there.
And that's part of what we...
Because I think at some point, it will have to.
Lots bigger than it is.
But I don't think we're there yet, which is why we've never done the migration to it.
And we have the facilities at ESP to do that, because we can receive shipments and stuff, and we have forklifts and...
Loading, we actually have a truck loading dock, and we have, we have the facility to do it.
But the problem with that is if we need paper here, and it's delivered out there, then we got to move it, so...
Yeah. Well, are you guys okay with just putting a spot, a spot in there for part-time for 25, 20,000 for next year, and then we still work into that when we work into our new financial system? You know, we were going to change the purchasing policies, now whether we do that right away at the first of the year, or if we wait, you know, this is the 4,500 deal?
I'm not really for it.
So...
I've never heard Jennifer come in and say, "Hey, I'm busier than a woman like a man."
She doesn't want to talk to you.
I know.
And she's not...
Enough getting her to go to family reunions.
Well, she is definitely overwhelmed at some points, and when we put this on her, keeping track of every vendor in the county, and a running total of their 90-day period, that's a lot of...
I would suggest...
On this system.
I would suggest we keep it in the budget for now, and then we get her up here and have a discussion about it, and then... I'm fine, you can put it in there now, and when we, when it comes back from the auditor's office, we can, we've got the final...
And since she'll have her own department, she'll now have to actually come up for a budget hearing?
We can leave it in there and put it in next year's budget, that does not mean we have to use it.
Exactly.
So, it, there's two ways, look, it's, it can be there, and if we decide to do it in July of next year, it's there.
Yep.
I just don't see it right now. We've got Debbie over there, that we don't utilize enough, I don't think. You know, she can do stuff too. She's, is she pulling files yet anymore? For the clerks?
She was, but not since all this moving, and, and by the way, their file unit is in, and they've been working this whole weekend, supposedly, they're going to be putting the files in those files.
And they may be more apt to go get their own files with it being in there.
Okay.
So.
We can pay for some ones from there, too.
Yeah.
I think we have a general agreement on how to move this one forward.
Yeah.
Got anything else on this?
Nope. Other than going back to the county commission, I did take her salary out, and no increase. I did put some bond money in there.
Yeah, you should go pay for Sam.
Sam, and I'm not, I'm pretty sure we'll probably pay for it this year, but I just didn't wanna be stuck if we didn't get it.
I think you have to pay for it this year, because I think he has to have-
We have to get it enacted, but I don't know-
I think he has to have the bond before he can become commissioner.
But I don't know whether they'll send me the bill this year.
Have you set, filled out the forms?
No, I gotta get that from them.
I mean, theoretically, you're, until November, there's not even a certificate that says you're the, but-
No, and I appreciate you letting me-
But you need to get the forms filled out, which are real simple.
Okay, I'll get one, yeah.
And I don't even remember how big the bond it is anymore, do you?
Ten thou- no, I think we upped it to-
Fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand.
Was that for us?
Statute-wise, I don't, I think it's twenty, but we upped it, so, yeah.
Never know when one of us screws up, huh?
No, that's what the insurance is for.
And basically-
The bond is in case you decide Brazil looks really good.
Basically, everything else I left the same, I guess, I could've reduced some of this for Jennifer's office supplies, but again, I don't think-
Just go through and figure that out, and for now, for purposes now, I think this is good to send forwards.
You took purchasing out of commission.
Yes.
Good?
Yep.
Good? Sam?
Yep.
Ready to run? You never know what the auditor's gonna do with it anyway. You're not, I'm not used to having you right here in front of us.
I know.
I actually appreciate it.
I like the fact that you sit in on this.
Yes, I do too.
I wish that had been done all eight years I've been here.
And if you, if I could sit in, knowing what you guys are gonna go through in the next ones, let me know, if you guys want. I just kinda wanna know before I get the totals, and then I have to ask you.
Coroner, coroner stays the same, except for, we got the, I gave you the letter, it has the amount of autopsies.
So the letter's right there, letter there.
Is that going up?
Yeah.
Twenty, you got twenty-five bucks? Is that right? Or seventy-five bucks, I don't know much.
I think it's, it's going to, what?
It's fifteen-seventy-five. Remember what it was last year?
Yeah, it's two hundred.
I thought it was fifteen-hundred last year.
Where's the increase reflected in there?
Actually, if, in the Excel budget. This is such a item, I have no idea what the-
It varies with the time of year, year.
How many, and this is on suspicious deaths, I guess, that we have to pay for the autopsies. And currently, we have twenty thousand in there. I did increase it to thirty, if you haven't already noticed, I, I've already transferred money into that line item, because we got like eight of them at one time.
Look at, we had two thousand twelve, thirty-seven thousand, yikes.
Okay, but hang on a second.
That was just the budget, though. That was just the budget.
The actual expense was, so-
Well, let me bring it up.
It shows our actual expense so far is only nine thousand.
Yeah, but, well, I changed it to eighteen, I thought.
Well, we budgeted twenty. We budgeted twenty. We've only spent nine.
As of the end of June, though, I think it only difference.
So you annualized it to eighteen?
Oh, I did. Okay, okay, that's fine.
I don't know why I can't see my, oh.
Okay.
All right, so, again, we'll just have to look at that one by the end of the year.
You just never know what it's gonna be.
Okay, so that's an easy one. And I just wanna mention that we have not increased the coroner's rate in some time. He's not submitted a letter asking for that, that that is to pay the coroner. And that statutorily, we have to have a coroner, right, Marv?
Yeah, it's the only one that can arrest a sheriff.
Well, yeah, I have heard that.
Can arrest the sheriff?
I think that's what it is, isn't it?
Something about that.
By statute, the only person that can arrest a sheriff is your county coroner, something like that.
That is correct.
Good luck with that.
Little known Cliff Clavinesses over here.
Why?
It's the way, way the law is written. Only person that can arrest the governor is the sheriff of Cole County.
Really?
Feds can do it, don't get me wrong, the feds can do it. But nobody else in the state can arrest the governor.
All right.
Because he's not under the authority of the governor, is that right, why?
Well, maybe citizens arrest, right? Go ahead, Debbie, before we get too started.
Okay, domestic shelter, we'll go to the next one. This is an easy-in-out fund, it is, um, it's, I kinda gave you a narrative right there, what it is, why we have to do it. Again, we're looking at the yellow, and it's money that comes in, I think, from the recorder on every fee that's charged for some document. And it has to be, go back out to, uh... It's DED can supply that services for that, for this particular special fund here.
Those racks?
Yes. We do currently have a contract, the way I understand there, about the own ones in this area that supply that service.
Is that a expense, or is that revenue?
Well, it's an expense back to them, and we call it racks coming in, I don't know how we have started with that.
It's a grant, and don't they sign it?
Yes.
So is that rape? Is that rape abuse crisis there?
Yes, it is.
And, and I think the way that works is to get the grant, to get the grant, or to get the funding, they have to sign that they're gonna provide the service. Because it used to be Salvation Army and racks, and then Salvation Army decided they would no longer do it. So we actually have to send off a document that says we're gonna use racks.
Yes.
And then we get the grant money, or the-
So we get the money, and then we, we pay them back?
And then we pay racks, yeah.
Just to follow-
Same way with domestic shelter?
In this domestic shelter?
Oh, that's, that's total, okay.
That is called the name of the department, but-
Because it, the reason it's, is we used to have Salvation Army in there too.
So we get in fifteen thousand, but we pay, pay out?
We have a little bit that carries forward, yeah.
Okay.
What we do is, we usually pay that out in January, the whole cash balance, and then we pay the cash balance out in June again. So we just keep going, twice a year, we pay that out, and maybe, may not have seen that going back out, but-
Is there a way to lock those top fields in your spreadsheet somehow?
You wanna free, you want me to, or you wanna, oh, well, I have to do it, because it's in, um...
Click on this cell right here.
I don't think he can change it.
Which one?
That one.
That one?
Uh-huh. And then go up to view?
Oops.
I don't think he can change it, though, because they're in read-only.
And then freeze pains?
Where's this view? Where's freeze? Oh, yeah, freeze pains, okay.
Right that one?
Freeze top row.
Well, it'll, if you do freeze pains, it'll freeze both column and row.
Yeah, it kinda messes you up when you get to the expense, because it says revenue.
Oh, cool.
Oh, that's cool, I like it.
You've been hiding that from us, oh.
I just like to work at it, so, I want you to work at it.
I like it, I like it.
Wow, we all learned something today.
Okay.
Freeze pain.
I've been here, this is my eighth time around doing this, and you only now taught me that.
Yeah, you never have.
We have too.
We have asked, and we've never got an answer, do you know?
But see, now-
You know what? This is because Kristen is here. You never did a set.
See, you're gonna get confused.
No, mine rolls up both, mine is fine.
See, the title, the titles at the top say revenue, so when you get that-
No, you don't. Mine don't. Yours did? No, ours are moving perfectly.
Okay, just, you'll figure this out.
Well, it, it says revenue.
It says revenue.
It does say revenue at the top, yeah, but, I mean-
Okay, well, keep that in mind, man.
I think for us, it was just the columns.
It's, it's, it's being able to have the columns to tell us which year's what.
Well, I didn't want you to get confused.
Amended actual and annualized, that's, that's kinda what I'm looking at.
All right, so the next one is the EMS sales tax. Again, so you remember, I'll-
You gotta do it on each one.
Yeah, I just, oh, well, that's-
It's not default setting?
And I'll save it on mine, so it's saved for future on yours.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sales tax, EMS, you know, all the money comes in, and then we transfer over to the enterprise, and we transfer back to the collector general revenue for our sixty percent rollback thing. So what I've done with sales tax income, I've left flat again. Unless you guys have a different perspective.
You know, it's a broken record, and you guys have both heard it, but Sam hasn't. I absolutely think we have to keep it at zero.
No, I, I-
And the number to you, the number to use is, is zero percent increase, and then if we have a positive, then that builds a little bit of a reserve, and next year, that resets the benchmark with a zero percent increase, because it'd just be what we've collected.
So you actually wanna use the actual amount in December as the amount for it?
Yes. So there's no increase. So it's the actual, the actual, the actual, and that built, because we're getting growth, even though it's minimal, it builds a reserve, and in the event we have a dip one year, we got a reserve there, and then we can just reset the number each year. And then, you never get in trouble, because you're projecting growth.
I think people have a lot of respect, because you've been going zero, I mean, it really-
Some people like to, no offense to your boss, always comes down and suggests we pledge at two or three percent growth, but it, it can catch you really bad.
I think it's really wise, I-
I currently have it on budget, I don't have it on-
Right, I usually project it each year, but-
And that's kinda what that is, but it's kinda worse.
You don't show the rollback in this fund.
It will be in a minute.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the revenue, I think we're gonna-
It's an expense.
Yeah, see, and you're gonna be looking at it, well, okay, go away. Interest there, I kept it the same budget, it looks like we're gonna be higher, but again, we're gonna be spending a lot of our money down this year, be it that project. So I didn't wanna overinflate in, uh, interest. Cash forward.
Line fifty.
Oh, you're down that far?
That's where that, right there, and then off to the side, you can see how much we transfer to each.
Okay.
Cash forward, you see this year was one point eight, I did drop it down to seven hundred thousand. I think that's comfortable, because of the project out there, that we're gonna be, where we'll end up. And, okay, we'll go to expense.
Does that include any other capital that we've spent out there, or will that come out of the other fund?
No, we've always spent the capital out of here, the big majority of the capital comes out of here.
So the radios and?
Beds, anything that, the extra requests that-
I thought that, um, I thought that project was one point two, and then with everything else, I mean, the radios was almost a hundred thousand.
And again, it's just a guess, what carry forward's gonna be. I kinda based it on taking that out, what's still to come in, what's still to pay out.
Well, and, and we've been, we've been running about a four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar surplus each year, give or take, in that fund. So when you take out one and a half million out of one point eight, that puts you to three hundred, and then you throw in four hundred thousand more, and you're at seven hundred, so. And that fund'll continue to grow, but depending on how much we spend in capital.
And it depends on what your vision is for that whole area, you know?
But we average spending about five to six hundred thousand a year in capital, every, every year, except for this year where we did the expansion. And we still end up with four to five hundred thousand dollars in surplus to build that fund up. And then we use that for, when it gets big enough, we can use it for bigger projects. Because I, I feel that, you know, that expansion out there probably solves that site. But at some point, we may end up having to look at another site, because currently, we use Region West out at Apache Flats. We use the jail. You know, we're using other facilities, and at some point down the road in the future, we may choose to wanna have our own second facility. We may not, but at least we would, we have the funding ability to deal with that.
So then on the expense side, besides the capital, we've been doing the first responders, the volunteer first responders, I should, well, the city too.
Well, we appropriate fifty thousand every year, twenty-five for the city, twenty-five for the county, and the city won't ask for it. And we don't know why.
We, one year, we pay-
Jason Turner had asked me at one of the meetings, I was, that-
The first-
And I called him and told him, I said, you've never asked for it. I can call him again, but you know, you don't really wanna beg people to take money.
Every year, I would talk to the city administrator and the mayor, and I'd say, send us a contract and an invoice, and we'll, we've got the money appropriated.
Jason knows.
Nothing, every year.
Jason-
Say if they don't notice this here, we take it off.
I think until they decide who's gonna be fire chief, and-
Well, we can do, like we do everybody else that comes and asks for money, tell them to get us a request at budget time, and, you know. I wanna play nice in the sandbox with them, is, is the deal. I don't have a problem sending it to them and saying, here, y'all asked for it, send us a contract, we got a check sitting there waiting for you, you know, touch base.
Nice club, we, we actually cut out some of our budgeted groups, because they never came and asked for it, and after about five years, it's like, why do you have it in the budget?
You better give it to the other first responders that are all volunteers. I'd, I'd rather throw it to them than I would, you know, throwing it to somebody that's getting paid to do it anyway.
Well, and speaking of the nine-one-one contracts yesterday, we budgeted half in the EMS sales tax, and we budgeted the other half in general revenue. So I put a four in there, for some reason, yesterday, I had that in my mind, but it is twenty-five percent of the cost of running the operation down there. So you double that.
That's a four percent increase, is what you're figuring that's gonna be?
Yeah.
It was last year.
So if we had our own nine-one-one system, where would that come out of? General or the sheriff?
To me, it would have to come out of here.
Law enforcement.
No, it'd come out of EMS sales tax.
That's whatever your vision is.
Well, okay, here's where I'm going with that, is why is it coming out general revenue? Why isn't some of it coming out law enforcement, and some come out EMS?
And it used to, and law enforcement couldn't su- support that?
They got twelve million dollars.
We took the nine-one-one out of there.
Eight million.
Took their capital out of there, and we never charged them an administrative fee anymore. Because that fund was in big trouble.
Remember, we got the big spreadsheet?
Well, I'm struggling with it, because there's eight million dollars, and you ought to be able to run our sheriff's department on eight million dollars. Ten.
Well, I struggle with spending a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars-
Times two.
Times two, on nine-one-one, and when I put the pencil to that, I mean, it, I'm amazed at how many people that is. I mean, it's, it's unbelievable.
So we looked while back, um... Were you here when we looked at what it would cost to stand up nine-one-one?
Yeah.
And it was, first year, first year was like a million bucks, and it was predominantly capital. After that, then it settled down to four hundred thousand or something like that. It's-
Still more.
To run a nine, to run a nine-one, and that was five years ago, maybe, four years ago?
Yeah, that's been a while back.
It, to run it, you have to have two people twenty-four-seven. Because you can never have, you can never have somebody on the bathroom break at nine, at the nine-one-one console. So it has to always be covered.
You look at Columbia and Boone County, what they're spending on?
Jeff said, we pay for three. I think they run, I think they run three twenty-four-seven down there, isn't that right?
I don't remember.
I think it's three twenty-four-seven, plus they have a supervi, they have a department direct, you know, they have their overhead, which we would be able probably to eliminate if we did it, that would be the big savings, is we wouldn't have to have a lieutenant in the police department making eighty thousand dollars a year, or whatever they get paid, just to oversee those guys, because we would have the sheriff doing it, or we'd have shirts doing it, or whoever. But we're effectively running a mini nine-one-one right now.
Well, that's-
Out of EMS.
Out of EMS.
Well, and that's, that's what I was thinking, I mean, couldn't those people effectively do some of this nine-one-one already? I mean, what, what they're doing now, I mean, they're dispatching people, so I can't imagine that it's that much more to dispatch everybody.
You need, when we looked at it, now, we had not upgraded EMS at the time. In fact, I don't think we had EMS.
I don't think we had EMS at the time.
So we may have looked at this before we had EMS, but the system they have out there right now is not designed to do a full nine-one-one dispatch, it's an ambulance dispatch. And we get, you call for an ambulance, you call nine-one-one, they transfer you to us. And then our dispatchers take over and talk to you and dispatch the ambulance.
And it also calls the police if police.
Right. They'll also, so you call nine-one-one, I need a, I need an ambulance at my off, at my business. They tone the fire department and then they transfer to the ambulance department. And then we do the direct dispatch and the direct conversation. So if you're saying, I need to do CPR, we have somebody there who's telling you how to do CPR. And then the nine-one-one center is on the horn with the fire department saying it's two oh nine East High Street, you know, et cetera. And that's because.
But I mean, if we did our own, if we did our own, wouldn't that be a complete duplication of?
So if we do our own, the system would be, if you dialed nine-one-one, you would still go to the city. Still go to the city. But if your call was coming in from outside the city limits, or it was an ambulance call, it would automatically be transferred to our nine-one-one system. Because there, there's no way to set, there's no effective way to set it up as overriding nine-one-one numbers.
What about all calls coming in from cellular phones?
You know, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
I don't know how many cities, counties do that. I mean, if counties, I know there are plenty of counties that run nine-one-ones.
I apologize, I gotta leave.
Oh, you missed out all the fun.
Well, I'll get with, we'll go over all this.
Yeah.
I just, it's.
Good luck with the AC, I had that, I had that at my house this last week.
I'm just, I'm hopeless, see, I get everything lined up, you know, where it, it comes in and then I get a bowl of chimney wish, we can get it up on the roof and.
Oh, did the unit actually go completely out?
Yes. Well, compressor, it's like, well, you know, you can buy a compressor, but it's, you just replace the whole thing, it's like, sure.
Sure, it's only money. Right? See you, Sam.
Okay, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to come and give you an update of the storage units that was installed this week. We are officially getting rid of boxes as we speak.
How come you're not there?
I've been there. Been there and back. I've got four people out there, five people working on it this week, we didn't have any prosecutors, it's because they're on conference, so it worked out really well.
I knew you said something, I couldn't.
Worked out really well, had everything just.
Good.
We got it in, Bill had everything cleared out in one day. And so they were able to, when it was delivered, they were able to immediately start setting it up. So that was, that's Thursday, Thursday, Friday, and then Monday and Tuesday they finished. Yesterday, Bill moved all of the boxes back over to where the unit is, and then now we're going. So we'll just, Sam crossing my fingers and making sure we have enough, she assures me we have enough, but it just looks like, oh my gosh, all of that's gonna fit in there.
It looks good.
Yeah, I know that it does.
So are y'all gonna be pulling your own files in, or is Debbie?
No, they do their.
No, I didn't mean it in a mean way.
No, no, they've been doing that. Debbie has not been doing theirs.
Debbie hasn't been doing them anymore?
Not theirs. Not for circuit.
Okay.
She's done them for other people, but she's not done them for circuit.
One question.
That's fine, I was just asking because trying to figure out the workload that she has over there. Go ahead.
One question I did have was on security, and I know Bill's got a key, you guys got a key to get into that area, but do those files not close and lock?
Close and lock.
Okay. So any other security out there do you see as an issue? Perfect. Okay, good.
Thank you very much for the update. Appreciate it, Donell.
All right, so that's the nine-one-one, the tax intimate increment financing. Basically, that's those TIF things that we have to pay back that sales tax, and we take from each one of the sales tax now.
Why are we talking about that? Is that gonna go up with the?
The mall? What's that?
Didn't the mall get approved for TIF financing?
It did.
So we probably need to increase our tax income financing.
Is it sales tax or?
It's only on growth. TIF only applies to growth.
Right. But that's where that, that difference comes in there.
That's where.
We pay the growth back to the city who then offsets their.
Yeah. They do it on that other one.
Yes, it will change, I don't know what the number is.
Yeah, I don't either, but we need to probably increase that a little bit.
I wouldn't.
In all three months.
I wouldn't think it'll be that large a number this first year because, but it's already in, I mean, we'll have to do it this year.
Yes.
Because there, the TIF went into effect.
We won't get it until.
Is the city?
The TIF went into effect like a month ago, maybe, two months ago.
I bet the city is handling that as well. Okay. We had issues.
That's money in and money out.
Right. So it's, and it's only growth. So it doesn't impact, it does not impact.
What's that?
Our zero budget.
Emmitsburg, not Emmitsburg. Munichsburg down here, that's a.
That's the one they get.
Yeah, that's a difficult one. All right, so then this inner fund transfer, I kind of spelt it out over here. Right now, we have transferring to the enterprise fund a million two, there's a three percent admin, and there's a sixty percent rollback. So basically, all that money's gotta go back out because of those reasons. And I do have a contingency of seven hundred thousand, basic, basically the cash forward, I set up as contingency. And then the capital outlay, I did put down below here Mike's request, oh, I gotta take this freeze frame off of here, or you can't see it.
Yeah, I can.
Well, it's kind of.
No, it's no problem.
Okay, well, I don't know how you.
I'm not any problem with it.
All right.
So that, the capital is his capital request, line fifty-eight, am I correct?
Yes, five thirty-seven, mhm. And I'm sorry, I didn't update mine.
And then the ambulance is the two hundred ninety thousand, is that for remounts or?
You got it all, you got doubled counting there? Debbie, you got double counting?
Double, no.
Oh, you did two, five eighty plus two ninety, didn't you? For the department budget, right? On capital outlay and ambulance?
Mhm, yeah, those two together.
Okay, I see what you did, you did, okay.
But now I'm reading it to be two hundred thousand instead of.
Those numbers don't add up.
I know, not now, because I, oh. When I had two ninety in there, they didn't?
Okay, well, I got five thirty-seven and two eighty and two ninety. Two eighty and two ninety is five seventy, so.
That's what I got.
Okay.
For capital outlay.
I don't think I had his request yet.
Five seventy.
Right, but that's not, that doesn't match with what the request is.
Yeah, I don't think I had his request, I was just going on last year's.
That only adds up to five thirty-seven, so that just needs to add up to five thirty-seven.
You wanted to, okay.
And then we can discuss, you know, again, we control the fund, so we can put it in and we don't have to approve it.
Because he had the COTS and.
Three thirty-seven, Debbie, or you wanted to exact, three thirty-seven, four forty-two.
Ambulance is two hundred even.
Yeah. Three thirty-seven, four forty-two, there you go.
Four forty-two.
That should make it, die with it, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you just had numbers in there that place, kind of place markers.
Yeah.
So that you could put question marks behind it.
See, now, see, that, that's.
That increased your contingency now. We're done balance?
That's what I'm thinking of. Oh, why don't, Kristen, you don't need a balance, that's wrong.
Most departments don't care.
No, why?
You need to, it needs to be seven hundred thirty-two, five seventy-one, twenty-five. Seven hundred, seven three two, five seven one, point two five.
Oh, okay.
There, perfect. No, it worked fine.
I know, we have sense.
Do we have any, uh, do we have any costs coming from cap region when we took over this?
Do we have any costs?
Yeah.
To me, truly, is a million two. Is that what you're trying to?
Yeah, I was just wondering what, what their yearly costs were on.
Yes, we did.
Yes. What they were losing every year.
It's locked away in the files. But yeah, they were losing.
Eight hundred.
Eight or nine hundred thousand the last year that they earned it.
And they were buying basically no capital for the last, so many years, so.
So they're running on old equipment and?
Old equipment and a shoestring, basically.
I don't know, I still struggle to see how they were losing that much on it, but.
Well, but look at what we're spending just in capital, I mean. I mean, that, you know.
But what we're spending on capital is included in that.
No. The one point two.
The one point two is the operational cost lost.
Okay.
Not the capital, capital's out separate. If you throw the capital in, we lose one point eight. And, and you know, it's.
Were they fully staffed? No, that's the way I.
They were not fully staffed, they were using.
Six ambulances.
Right, I mean, they, we, we have a much more robust service now. It is.
At a much bigger cost.
It, it is a bigger cost, but you know, in the end, the voters voted to fund it. Understanding that that was what we were doing. And I think that that's, I mean, that's why we want.
And that was part of us, get the response times down to.
Yep.
Eight minutes.
Six minutes to, the magic number's six, and we've got it to six to ninety-five percent of the county. Which I think is pretty good.
Yeah, I think it is very good, and you know, if it's your parents or somebody that's going down and dying, it, every minute makes a difference and because you think, yeah, you can.
All right, what else, Debbie?
We're gonna skip to general distribution, we'll leave general accounts to the end because that is the balancing items there.
No, hell, we're done.
Sorry. General distribution, it's not, basically, it's a financial institution tax going in and going out, and it's.
We don't need to talk about that.
All right.
Which ones do we actually need to talk about, Debbie?
General welfare, we're not gonna address that. We'll go to the health insurance self-funding.
Gosh darn it. I don't know why this computer once in a while does this.
I'm gonna beat you to it.
It throws me out.
Oh, really?
Mhm. And I have to go back, all the way back through it.
If I beat you to it, open it, and we'll have the freeze payment.
Which one are we going to?
Health insurance self-funding.
Why did we skip general public welfare? Nothing in there to talk about?
There's nothing really.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I needed to know.
I'm gonna be putting.
Nope, you didn't beat me.
I'd like to talk about that at some point, general public welfare.
Oh, I heard you said.
Do we want to talk about that before it goes the auditor, do we want to talk about it when it comes back?
Um, we can talk about it when it comes back, but.
Will you put a note down?
Because she, yes, because she actually gets the request from the entities we don't.
Have anything in that.
Yeah, all you got's a letter from Habitat for Humanity, I think.
That's all I have, so.
Well, that's what I was thinking, we usually, I do want to talk about that definitely, but we don't need to address all that right now.
Okay.
We usually talk about it at like several of them.
Because we started this new self-insurance, so we had to start a new fund, and so there's interest money that we earn on the bank account. I anticipate we will have probably anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred thousand carry forward. I do believe that's the three-month carryover from.
It's a one-time savings.
Yeah. And so I based the insurance expense, or I'm sorry, sorry, the insurance revenue, I based it on what we're charging this year for our employees for health insurance, hoping and assuming that maybe we wouldn't have to go out the next year. But well, it's yet to be seen. And it's probably, we can go down to the expense part, and again, there's not much here. It's the, I wanted to set up a contingency, we talked about it. It's up to you guys whether you do, but I like one there for that three-month carryover.
What are we running per month now?
Expense-wise?
Now that we're mature.
It varies.
But I think we're not, we're not mature till we're through December, or we're through the fifteen months, right?
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, we're mature, we're pretty mature now in that we're, we haven't, we've gone away from our three months of savings where the first three months, the bills don't even get to us in time to pay. We're now into the full normal flow of bills.
Yeah, but I'm thinking also that most of the employees are still within their deductible, still within their copay, so.
Yeah, that's true, the last months will be more expensive.
Yeah, so.
I'm just cur, what are we running at now? I'm just curious. You don't have a month by month?
I can get a bill a week for thirty thousand, and I can get a bill a week for two thousand. So.
Okay, so, so the biggest bill you've gotten for a week is thirty thousand?
Yeah.
So if we assume that that's the biggest bill so far, then the max one month could theoretically be, so far, would be five weeks times that, assuming you have five weeks in a month. So a hundred and seventy thousand right now is what we're running a month? And that's well below what our budget number is.
We're only putting in about a one eighty, one eighty-eight a month.
We're putting in one eighty-eight.
That's payroll. One eighty-eight. That comes out of what we're paying out of each fund for the employees. That's what we put into that fund every month, out of payroll. So is thirty, yeah, that's probably high, but I just also want to let you know that fortunately, last week, we did hit the fifty thousand and we're into reinsurance.
Right, but that costs us nothing.
I don't say that, don't hurt.
That's actually, I hate to say it, that's good for us, because once you hit the fifty, we stop paying entirely.
I see, but the bad part is, is it still rolls through our account.
Yeah.
So we still have to actually initially pay the bill.
But we get it back in. So we get, but we get it back in.
We haven't seen what the lag time is going to be as far as getting.
Follow that, follow that like a hawk, I want to know the.
We did get one check back there.
Reinsurance check?
Yeah, reinsurance check, we did get one, but it's only like two thousand or some. I don't know, I'm having a hard time getting the reports out of there of where we're at. So I've got to call into UMR, they're helping me, but unfortunately, once you do that reassurance, it does affect your renewal, you know, because they look at that kind of stuff.
How many people are over fifty thousand and?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they do look at that stuff.
That was the number, wasn't it, fifty?
Yes. So they do look at that, so it's maybe not out of our pocket, but it still affects it for the next year.
So that five hundred thousand, that's from those initial three months, but if we run a surplus, I mean, we, that fund could continue to grow.
Yes.
So.
It's not a fund, it's an account.
Well, yeah, account, fund.
Right, we didn't set up as a separate fund.
Yes, we have to for the outside auditor.
It does, okay.
Internal service.
So, but anyway.
So it's so new and it's so new to us.
My suggestion would be, we, for the year, first year, that being next year, where you're totally, fully into operation, you just keep the contingency and the cash forwards staying in the account.
Right.
So you don't transfer anything out of that account yet. And then if at the end of this year plus next year, you're seeing that number continue to grow, then I think you can probably start pulling some money back, putting some money back into GR out of it.
Or why not reduce the rates?
Which is the same as putting into GR. I mean, I don't mean that, I mean, then you can do something with that excess money.
That'd be a cost reduction in the actual benefit, yeah.
Yes.
So one way or another, you can do something with that money, but until you get that second full year in, you don't really know what that number's gonna end up being at the end of the year.
That history, because, you know, from one year to the next could vary a lot.
Yes. One person could vary a lot.
Well, and, and January, and all likelihood, it'd be a very expensive month, because most people, if they're active users, will for sure hit their deductible in December. And therefore, the January bills that come in, which are usually for December or November, are gonna start being full payments. What?
I don't understand those people.
Which people?
Well, once you meet it-
Once you hit that deductible, you go out and have anything and everything done that you want to have.
December third, first?
Well, that's why, I'll say it again, just my part, we should move entirely to an HSA-based system. We should take away the HMO slash PPO concept.
You still have a total deductible too.
I, I understand that, but now you actually have to put in money.
You have skin in the game every time you go to the doctor.
You know, you're right that at the end of the year, if you spent your seven thousand dollars, yeah, you can go hog wild and have a party. But you had to stomach seven thousand dollars during the year, which most people are gonna think real hard.
Well, and you don't want to set a thirty-five hundred.
And whatever you contribute into that account, you carry with you. So, if you leave, and, and you haven't used it, and you're, you're a, pardon my expression, a responsible person, so you contribute to it every month. And because you're fortunate and you're healthy, and you don't use it, and then you go take another job, or you retire, or do it, you have this pot of money that goes with you. I can't understand why-
I don't know what the healthcare reform is gonna change.
HSAs are in it.
Do they do some kind of an educational thing if we, to tell people, if you want to keep your health insurance rates down, here's what we need to do as employees? Number one, don't be going to the emergency room. That's the worst thing they can do.
Joe does do that to the employees when we have that.
I've never heard of it.
Never heard of it. We have meetings every year.
Have you ever gone to any of those meetings?
I have meetings, and it's four places a year.
No. That's what I'm saying, though. I've never heard of it.
Because you don't go.
You never have. I send emails out.
Insurance, they go through the whole spiel.
But we don't do that because you guys prepare the forms for us, and we just show up and sign them.
I know, with too nice to you.
So, you don't go through the whole process? It's your fault. This is your fault.
I've never heard of it.
You sign the forms. You come in my office and say you don't-
I know exactly what insurance I want. I do HSA. Here you go. Here's my center I made.
Just like you just said, you know what insurance you have, but if you come to the meeting, she would explain to you, let's not go to the emergency room. Let's stop, think about it, if you're not willing to do it.
So, you're telling me other people come in and sit there for twenty minutes, listen to the spiel? Each person, one at a time?
No, it's a group.
Well, the other thing I think you can look at is, because we set the rates-
Yes.
As opposed to the insurance company setting the rates. You know, you guys can look at setting the rates for the HMO, PPO, PPO, whatever. My tongue is thick this morning. At a much higher rate, because you get to set the rates now.
We talked about that.
You can set it at a much higher rate, and you will migrate people into the HSA, because they'll see a, and anybody who's on a PPO today, do we use a PPO or HMO? I can't remember which one. PPO.
Oh, PPO.
You know, anybody who's in the PPO today, if they migrate to the HSA, they're gonna see more money either in their check or in their HSA account, because that rate is substantially cheaper.
And you'd be surprised, over the last four years, it has migrated to that, and the younger people are understanding that. They're moving that way. It's just a harder concept for the older people that like to pay that copay when they go into-
All I can tell you is, we tried moving it three times, Jeff, you and May, or twice.
Twice, I think.
And a certain predecessor who's no longer on the commission was-
I understand where he's-
adamantly, I mean, and absolutely opposed to going to the HSA. Remember that? I mean, it was-
But when-
It was not even a discussion.
I understood where he's coming from on that.
Coming up with that money is hard.
What?
When we have paycheck-to-paycheck people, coming up with that money all of a sudden is hard.
But if you look at what the savings and the rate is, and the fact that we contribute money into that account, that's a pretty sweet deal.
I know.
Coming up with what money?
That whole cost of going to the doctor versus paying the copay.
You don't have to come up with it. You just send a payment every month.
All right, we're gonna skip to the next.
I've had enough of the financial-
Let's talk more health.
We're gonna just go to the very last one, which is the sheriff's transfer, which is-
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do sales tax according.
Yeah, we'll go to that. I just saved the big one for-
Did it to me again.
Debbie.
Sorry.
Trying to stay ahead of you in there.
Well, this is that one line item right here. This is the promise that I guess was made to the-
And the only thing we take out of it right now is computers, is that right?
Yes.
Are you in the sheriff?
Yes, sheriff transfer from G.
Two point oh four minus the-
Two point oh eight five, isn't it?
Yeah, she's got two oh four up there. I knew it was two point oh something.
Oh, yeah, two oh four, you're right.
It wasn't this year. I'm going on holiday.
What are you talking about?
She said every three years.
That in rate cost. We started in your computer cost is the cost allocation study that we used to do annually, but then-
Child support reimbursement.
I thought this year was in two years.
Well, she told me, well, we didn't have to do it. Maybe we have to do it at the end of this year for this data, but we pay for it next year.
We pay for it next year. Next year will be the time that's-
So, yeah.
I'm leaving those costs in there for this year.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, same thing with the assessor. We're charging the same rate as we have, and once we get a new study done.
We address.
Yeah.
And we won that case.
Again.
Again.
All right, so, let's just go, I don't know, let's go to general accounts. Because you guys.
You're bouncing around. I am really struggling with keeping up with you.
No, we get to general just to please.
I like to go down in order, so I can see how close to the end we're getting.
Sorry. You got two more. This one and one more.
Well, the good news is this one and one more. How about that?
That's good.
This is a big one, so I'm just gonna do my thing.
We're gonna do general welfare another day, or when it comes back.
We'll probably do it when it comes back from Kristen, because we won't know what the-
The request.
So, here's what I suggest we do, just for purposes of sending it to Kristen, because she's gotta balance the budget out, just put in what we did last year.
Well, she's gonna take care of it.
I'm gonna put in whatever request I receive from outside work. So, if they don't send in their requests, I'm-
I'd like to see them all in there.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Anybody that makes the request this year. So, I sent out a letter asking them-
When did the letter go out?
Same time your budget did, so middle of July.
Well, we've only gotten one back so far.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to at least see them all in there, at least from last year.
Yeah.
And if they have a request, then move it forward, but so at least I can see last year's.
Well, and you'll see-
Who have you gotten back, do you know?
I know, I've got-
Habitat.
Stockers, Habitat, Art of the Fire.
I just got another one the other day, too.
Uh, Home Make Healthcare came this morning.
Salute.
I don't ever get it.
No, we don't.
Well, pull them out of the budget.
Downtown?
She does.
Downtown.
You're on that committee this year.
Historic Society. Historic Society.
No, I have to speak.
You notice when I said, hey, I'll let you have that one. That's a good committee to be on. That's a fun one.
We zero their funding and put Sam on there.
Hey, can I, can I just make a, can I just tell you one of the rare success stories that's flown over the radar at the county commission? Eight years, never served.
Never been on there. I didn't mind being on the committee until you had to be up here for twenty-four hours for the-
Yeah, he waited till August twenty-eighth.
Oh, my goodness.
You didn't realize that you had to be chairman when you served on that committee, too. I learned that one real quick, when they said-
Yeah, you were chair or co-chair.
When, when I was sitting up here and, and Chris was on it, I think, and he said, do you want to serve on the suit to just say? I said, sure, I'm happy to do that. What does that entail? He said, well, you're vice chair. I'm like, hey, that's great. Love you, vice chair. So, the next year, the chairman, like, ah, I'm interested in doing.
Okay, well, we'll go to general accounts. Basically, this is under your control, and basically, it's, it balances GR. We have revenue-wise, we have financial institution tax, and that kind of explains what it is. We have stock insurance, that kind of explains. This is the local used tax. I just, uh-
Me, too.
Hey, why don't we just take, can you just take a, let's take a two-minute break, and I'll use the restroom.
All right.
That way, that way we don't stagger in and out one at a time.
Okay. That's, that's so weird. Have you been watching that?
It's down this year, but there's no way to track it.
I know.
There's no way.
What's down?
Use tax.
Yeah. It's hard to track, because it's mainly on like bigger equipment and stuff that's purchased outside of the state.
That's like trying to track how many calories I eat. There ain't no way to track.
But you would think it would relate to sales tax, but it never does.
It doesn't, other than it went up.
Well, that, yeah, that's basically what, what it is.
Technically, the use tax should apply to all internet purchases purchased outside the state, too.
Over five thousand, it should.
It doesn't, but it should.
Well, I thought there was something, two thousand or something.
Well, they talked about making it on everything, but I think there is like a dollar threshold of what you have to report.
Yeah, what, what, as a-
Total, so if you spend over five thousand on Amazon, should it be reported?
Or two or five, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I don't know if it's five, but it just, yeah.
They can't, they can't police it, so.
Just like work bill. How much does work bill pay in sales tax?
Yeah. Oh, good luck.
Yeah.
Why, why don't you report it, though?
You wouldn't unless you made a one-time purchase. I mean, most people are gonna not report it.
But, so like all farm equipment considered ag, you buy from out of state, wherever, you don't pay tax on it, don't pay sales tax on it?
That, they should be reported.
They should, they should be, and then that would in turn make you, especially on your taxes, if you depreciate it, I don't, I would think you'd have to have that, but maybe not.
Right, but I mean, there's a form that you fill out for ag equipment, and everybody fills it out, and they don't pay the sales tax on it. Guaranteed, there aren't, there aren't use tax, neither.
We've seen quite a bit of growth this year, the first year in a while, that it's actually gone down instead of up.
And, I mean, you can't even relate it to a half a cent when we added the EMS, when we added-
Other than it jumped, because we added the additional.
But it took a long time, yeah.
Well, this, I think, this, every day for them, I was like, oh, my god.
It's kind of interesting how they would-
Houston's that way, too.
I don't know, you mess with them out of Louisiana, then.
Houston is awful.
Kristen, I don't know, maybe the departments and me, they probably feel at ease talking to you, and I know the sheriff probably wouldn't want me in there. You guys are discussing budgets.
Yeah, really.
I mean, I'll come if, if you want, but.
I just feel like sometimes they play the game of, they tell you guys one thing, and then they dump you off now.
Yeah.
Then all, whatever, and then they-
Yeah. Not right now.
Or something. It's like, we had some conversation, we talked about it.
Yeah. And I mean, it's us against them kind of thing, so that's, that's their mentality, so I shouldn't say that.
What?
Us against them.
Who?
The departments. Commission. Budget.
The departments?
Our elected officials.
Oh, yeah, I understand the elected officials. That's a turf issue. I wouldn't expect the departments.
No, no, not our department.
Okay.
So, there's some big revenue in there, and then public defenders run. I do charge the, um, the three or four counties. Actually, I think I'm short on one of them right now. I'm not paying, but I'll let you know, so you can help me out there. And three percent admin fee, this is where all that comes back in for all these funds. And again, it will change. It's based on actual revenue less carry forward. And then, interest. This is what we're getting on our money through the current contract. I think it's due. I think it's due next year, or fifteen, two thousand and fifteen. All right, so, health insurance, that's just an in and out for retirees. Actually, I could probably think about going down on that. So, um, workers' comp, in and out. I pay all the bill, and then I charge the different funds. And departments within general revenue if I can. Inter, uh, insurance. That's just revenue coming back. I'm sorry. That was that big money that we, um, received from MOPR.
Oh, that check.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we'll probably get another one this year.
Well, I didn't really want to bet on it, but-
But I don't know how big it'll be.
Yeah. So, office supplies, that's just the in and out, and when we get money back from the different departments we bill for things that go through here.
Miscellaneous has a knee in it, by the way. Forty-six, seven, sixty-one. Miscellaneous has a knee.
Oh, well, that must be in the system.
Uh-oh.
It is, but I deny miscellaneous doesn't count, so it wasn't me that it's wrong.
Many, many, many-
It's probably Jim. We'll blame it on him.
Ah, no.
He won't be here next year to take the grief, right?
I doubt that Jim puts anything on a computer, huh? Huh?
All right, so that was the estimated carry forward. Again, I got it down below, and I could show you that and how I came up with it. But it's shot in the dark at this point. Miscellaneous, we're paying back, oh, that loan was paid off. It's that fifteen-year payback for Eugene Water. That amount of money I'm taking back from that fund, and that is the money that we're charging to O'Far for rent over there, assuming he can get that back out of his grant, but-
So, all that's in seven sixty-one? That's, includes Eugene Water?
Just the loan payback from that fund to general, remember we borrowed a hundred thousand?
We loaned them, loaned Eugene Water a hundred thousand, and they're paying it back, maybe.
Maybe. So far, they're paying it back.
So far, we're just taking it, and we'll see where we end up.
They're just using the money in the hundred thousand?
Receiver ship, um, that is the, that will be the actual cash forward balance. Now, we can get into expenses.
Will that be the cash forward balance after the encumbered amount with the Architects Alliance, or?
Yeah.
That doesn't include.
It does not include what, what we haven't yet decided to do yet.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we have expenses that-
That doesn't-
That have incurred with Architects Alliance that will come out of that.
Well, we hadn't talked about where it was coming from necessarily.
Well, I have put it in.
But that receiver ship, that would be exactly what that would be for, and so, when we were looking at the bill on the fourth floor, adding the fourth floor put us anywhere from, what, three point one to three point five million, which is seven hundred thousand more than what we looked at.
That's the right place to put it.
I agree.
So, right now, if you want to look at that, then you'd be looking at forty-five, forty-five.
I'd, I'd be have to look at-
Because that contract with Architects Alliance is two hundred and some thousand, two, just right-
But that's included in the two point four million when we budgeted for doing it.
But I don't think in their numbers from yesterday, it was not included.
It's at the bottom line, under the three point one.
Oh, it was.
It's not included.
Not included.
You're right. I'm saying, it's, it's underneath the three point one.
Yeah.
Right.
It's in the three point one to three point five range somewhere in there.
No.
Well, if the bids come in at three one, then yes, you're correct. If the bids come in at three five, you're not correct.
Yeah. There's another, there's another two hundred and twenty-five thousand in there for their fee.
Okay, well, then we'll just go down to the expense, so.
See where you put it.
Keep moving.
Keep us on track, Debbie.
That's the number.
All right, so the, again, the health insurance, I might lower that. That's just retirees. Again, we, we get the money in there, we pay.
Would that hurt?
I want this recorded. If Chris were right, I was wrong. I will admit it.
Where are you at now?
Oh, the expense side, um, in the fives, uh, with the thirty thousand, I'm gonna change that, but it's, um, going out to pay for the retirees, and it comes back in.
Which one's that? What number? Sixty-two.
On lines, yeah, sixty-two.
Okay, I got it. I'm sorry.
Unemployment, that's as we go, we pay as we go. So, the, I don't budget within every department's, within general revenue for unemployment. I put it here. Each fund, I do budget for them to have some unemployment cost that would come out. The audit services, I'm not sure where we're at in the bid pro, um, we just did that, didn't we?
We did, but it was a slight increase over the last year, so.
So, on your comment on unemployment, does, does that fall within that three percent admin fee that we charge some of those or not?
No.
Or it's all separate? Okay.
Audit, again, that's to have the outside audit done each year. Um, then the next thing is economic development. Now, I don't know what you guys want to do there, but I'll just-
We put it in to move it forward.
Yes.
And then we, because we, we control the account, so we don't have to spend it if we don't want to.
And I actually did get, okay.
Good.
Oh, I actually did, we did get a letter from the Extension Center, and that's the request that they have there.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, which is a pretty good increase, but-
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the increase, the net increase on that.
I did a five-year look back of theirs, and actually, the last four years, they've asked for an increase, whereas previously before that, they were staying pretty consistent and not asking for increases. So, I actually picked their budget and plugged it in to see where their increases were, and most of it's in salaries.
Yeah. Aren't the university employees?
No, like Chris is, but the two ladies over there, they get funded through here.
So, we need to figure out if, um, if you want to continue to-
Well, it's, uh, if it's two percent and it's salary-related, you know, our employees aren't getting two percent or haven't been, so, anyway.
Why don't we note that?
Which one are you on?
Why don't we note that?
And I've created-
Extension.
Take it, take it back, what we send to the auditor, take it back to ninety-seven, three twenty-one, which is last, you know what we budgeted? So, it's a no-growth with a note that if we look at a payroll adjustment, we might want to look, relook at that number. Is that a fair?
Their payroll adjustment's gonna come from University of Missouri, anyway.
Well, yeah, but, but they're charging us for it.
The two ladies we pay.
They're individually funded, mostly by us.
But we don't cut them a check. We do write their check?
Well, no, not the actual employee. We, we cut them a check for most of their budget.
But what we do for COCA Extension is, we send them one check says-
Monthly, I send them.
How much is, where's it at?
Ninety-seven thousand.
For ninety-seven thousand. So, if they, if they're saying it's for salary increase, then I agree, just do the same as what we do. We leave that at zero for now.
Okay.
But if they-
I don't know what's hurt.
I don't.
I don't hate, hate to move forward, but we'll talk about that.
We've always put in what they requested. We've never questioned, but we've never really looked back to see what they were spending it on, either.
But if they do a salary increase, that's gonna be through University of Missouri. It's gonna be footing that bill, right?
I think Chris and the higher-ups are paid directly from the University of Missouri. I think Chris and the higher-ups are paid directly from the University of Missouri. I think the ladies are paid through the Extension Center somehow, because they talked to you guys years ago about getting them on our insurance, getting them on our insurance, getting them on our retirement.
But we didn't do that.
Yes, we said no.
And they're all through the university system. We just pay their salary.
We just write them a check and wherever that money goes.
We write a check for ninety-nine, I know we write it in parts, but we write a check for ninety, ninety-seven thousand dollars to University of Missouri. It's University Extension Services, but it's the University of Missouri.
Yeah.
And they could spend that money on Pulaski County if they felt like it, as long as they continue to provide the services here. Money's fungible once it goes into an account.
I mean, I just like to look at it kind of like, and I'm not saying that I don't like the Extension Service or anything, I just like to look at it as, look, we're going to give you this amount. And, you know, we'll look at an increase, but, you know, just keep, everybody just keep adding an increase and we're just adding to costs. So, I mean, whatever that amount is that we decide, ninety-seven thousand dollars or whatever, let's try to keep it.
I'm, I'm fine with leaving it fly and we can talk about it.
Yeah.
If we do give employee raises this year and we want to bump theirs up a little bit to maybe help them.
Of course, they've gotten benefits and we haven't given other folks benefits.
Well, there was some years that we took it down. We took that rate increase out.
Alright.
We based it on their request.
Let's go forward. I think we've got a plan and I'm going this one forward.
Yep.
Okay, animal shelter, we have an agreement with them unless somebody wants to take that back out, but it's a hundred thousand plus CPI, so it's still better than what we had had for a long time, so.
Okay.
So a hundred and two thousand is the increase?
Yes. No, they haven't asked for this year, so.
But we need it. We have to have that contract, so.
Yeah. Professional services, this is hodgepodge of different things. It's the ser, ser, tax payback to the collector, it's the spectrum, it's the attorney fees. Oh, that is Jill's magazine, not magazine, what do you call it? So you can get, actually, it's.
Westlaw?
Westlaw, yeah. So it's whatever figure you want to come up with.
I think we'll just keep it there. We don't, we, I don't think we've ever spent it.
No.
Uh, one year we did, but that was something special. What do we do that year? Do you remember?
Well, we had that prosecutor's thing in there last year that.
No, back two thousand, two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven.
What was that? It was something.
We budgeted a really big number that one year.
Was that lawsuit? Oh, that Ameren, Ameren, the gentleman that was in prison for twenty years?
I don't know. Anyway, there was one year, we've only even spent.
Ameren.
Ameren. One year we've actually spent, that's it.
So you know, I can't pronounce it. Nine-one-one, there's the other half of the cost right there.
Let me ask you a question. Do we know, and you won't probably, but some, it's more maybe rhetorical question, do we know how much of the nine-one-one system responses the fire districts? I know it's a really small number compared to us and the ambulance, but.
It probably doesn't show.
Do you know what it is?
We get that one-page report.
Talking about the rural fire, fire districts?
Because I'd like, I'd like to see this number migrate back to law enforcement budget when it's healthy enough to take it. But on the other hand, if, you know, we, we kind of subsidize the cost of the rural fire departments, they don't pay directly for anything for nine-one-one. But when you call in Russellville and you dial nine-one-one, you get the fire depart, they'll send out the Russellville Fire Department. So I'm wondering if.
But was that part of that tax that was passed for the fire districts?
They don't pay for it. The entire cost of nine-one-one system is seventy-five percent, or, I can't remember, do we pay it?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And twenty-five percent us. And then we've broken that between EMS and law enforcement. But really, it's three parts. It's really EMS, law enforcement, and the rural fire departments. And the way I see it is, is we need to figure out what those numbers are internally. So that we can say, you know, sixty percent's EMS, thirty, forty percent, or thirty percent is sheriff, ten percent is these rural fire departments. And the rural fire departments probably ought to come out of general accounts.
Right, I agree.
And the other ones ought to come out of their own accounts, because we eventually have to migrate, we have to migrate that over to law enforcement.
Yeah, we separated, but we're.
We did it to balance the budget.
General. But then we can say, honestly, these are sheriff's calls, this should come out of law enforcement.
And I think if.
We have to get that breakdown from the city.
And they, and I know they have it, because I've seen it before. So if you can just contact somebody down at the city and say, hey, can you get us a two thousand thirteen? That's good enough for, for what we need to, a breakdown of EMS calls, sheriff's department calls, rural fire calls.
And then at some point, I mean, just get that arena at some point if the sheriff's fund accounts.
Maybe this year, I don't know. I don't know what point, I don't know what point we're able to migrate, but we want to make sure we have that so we can migrate.
So there you see that. Let's see. So we did the nine-one-one and here's some other expenses, communication.
Anything of any note? Anything of any substantive note here?
Insurance, we don't know yet.
What is, what is that insurance for?
Property liability. I did take it up a little bit because of the million dollar and that reminds me, I got to talk to Rick Nodgin, because we're about done with the project. So I want to increase the value of that building. So workers' comp, basically that's departments within the commission or within the GR, the thousand-dollar deductible. Drug testing, new employees, basically I take it all out of here for all the departments. Meetings and travel, I just kind of have tried to do this in the past. When your commission budget or when you guys go to something that affects the whole county, I take that expense out of here. Versus your annual training comes out of the other budget.
What's mileage and? It's the same line item, just number two.
Yeah.
Five-three-two-six-five, five-three-two-six-five-two, what's?
We created a sub-account for mileage because there was always a debate about what we should reimburse for mileage, so this makes it easier to then break it out. If you want to reduce mileage rate from forty-seven and a half cents to forty cents, we can figure out what it would save the county. MAC and Mid-Mo Regional, there is the contracts for this past year. Whether you do that or you don't do that, NACO next year, it's just a placeholder. Office supplies, that's in and out, most, all of it is what Melody buys and what we get reimbursed. Parking, parking is the city parking, all the lots that we pay for. Postage is the machine out here to fill it up with postage.
You need to think about parking. If you actually decide to do the project over here, that cost is probably going to increase. You're just going to have people that normally park in those lots that need to be parked somewhere else.
That park over at Carnegie?
No, the lot behind here and if we eliminate all the judges parking along the building.
I think that's an excellent point and I think that the court should help pay for that parking, since they're getting a courtroom.
I think we need to keep that in with the cost of building it. So, yeah, we do need to think about that. I agree with that and.
I agree.
Uh, if we can have the courts, if they'll help fund some of that, or if they can get some state parking over there at the garage.
They have state parking garage, they just don't like using it. Like, say, have to walk up.
Before you leave, what y'all do is draw up a new parking scheme. But this is like December twenty-ninth. Draw it up.
Oh, no, we have to.
We'll prove it and all the state employees park in state garages and this is now.
Why don't you, why don't you send that to me on, why don't you send that to me on December twenty-ninth? I'll, I'll see how that falls in my priority scheme at that point. Alright, we're not.
Be out of the country then.
In fact, I will send, I will send a blanket email out to all county employees advising them that Jeff has approved this new parking plan.
County employees won't have a problem with it, I don't think.
Oh, you don't know what it'll look like yet. You're trusting that I'll do something that you like.
It's going downhill again.
Elected officials will park, elected officials will park down the hill in the state, in the county lots and.
It's our new wellness program.
That's right.
Well, there's that cost allocation. We're going, we're going to win. There's that cost allocation. Every, every three, there's the cost allocation back in the budget. I don't know what I meant, every three, two, three expenses. Alright, contingency, I'm like, do the expenses, maybe instead of two, the expenses. There is the contingency. I did just plug in the contingency as the reserve.
Where is our reserve policy? I can't find a copy of it anymore. The only downside to going to this electronic system is. I used to always keep it here in the agenda folder.
If you go to last year's, I don't think I moved it over.
Let's see.
Let me see it. There it is.
Where's that?
It's under two thousand fourteen. I'll print it out for you.
No, no, I just, I, I can look at it on the computer. Where's that?
Um, if you go back out of the budget.
I'm in twenty-fourteen. A reserve goals for Cole County.
So commission after I've again, reserve goals, commission's budget, twenty-fourteen, reserve goals.
Yeah.
That's what it is. Alright, there it is. Email it to myself.
Recommendation is that we.
What page am I on here?
Pretty close to the end.
Okay.
Seven. That we have one point six million in there, plus another million.
Plus one point three, so that's one, two, three, four million. Right? So I count. One, six, one, one, three.
Well, we might have to go back.
I'm rounding up.
Put the new figures in there for, you know, it's basing it off a percentage of two thousand and nine's totals there in that last one. So. Which should.
It should be four million dollars. So that number should be four, not five. It's what, look, it doesn't mean we, that the contingency goes to four. What I'm saying is, is that line that says the county reserve goal is five million, the county reserve goal is four million. It's three, nine, four, five, because we've never changed it. Right? Debbie? Debbie?
Yeah, I like five, but.
I understand, but I mean, that's what our, our policy doesn't say five, right?
Well, I need to go back and look at that. Ten percent on that two thousand and nine thing.
I don't think that our budget has gone up that much since two thousand nine in GR. Well, okay, now you can't count double and triple counting money.
No, you would take the total amount of expenditures minus your contingency and receiver. You get your total expense per year. So you would take thirteen expenses since you had that with fourteen yet, and then she took, what, ten percent of it?
She's got analysis in there.
So she took total.
How big do you think it is? Fifteen million versus thirteen million?
Let's see what it's.
GR, only, because that's only GR, it's not any of the other funds.
Yeah, we're probably fifteen, sixteen, so you're talking one, five, one, six, still four, two, four, three.
Yeah, it's still, it's still four, for, you know.
But she's taking a ton, the whole thirteen million there. That would have been the whole, the whole budget.
No, it's just GR.
Well, yeah, GR, but not less anything.
She didn't exclude the reserve.
No. And we're probably up to about twenty, right there.
How do we get to twenty from thirteen?
Well, I don't know. I'd have to go look for the total expense.
Because by oh-nine, we had all the, I mean, we haven't done anything of a substantive revenue number since then.
Well, you would have seen some of the rollback stuff there in eleven, couldn't lines been, uh, include EMS rollback changes between.
So it would be less.
So that might make up for the difference.
So it'd be less. If you rollback, bringing in less revenue.
But that transfers.
It comes back in on the other side.
Yeah, we, that's the double counting thing I'm talking about.
Well, but she used it. I can guarantee you that thirteen million is.
We have a policy, it's in writing. It doesn't, again, I'll say this, it doesn't mean you change what the contingency expense number is, it just means that the note.
Budgeted revenues for oh-nine.
Right. So what's GR revenue?
I can't tell you.
You can't pull that one out.
I can give you a number, but I don't. I don't really look at the budget as a whole.
I don't either. Just a bad comment, I guess. Alright, go ahead, Debbie, I'm sorry.
Alright, so whatever you guys do there.
Contingency stays at five million.
It's wherever you all want to set it.
Well, the contingency is what.
Is what, is what we set it, but that doesn't mean that the county reserve goal, that was Mark's comment.
My point is not the, I'm not talking about the contingency, I'm just talking about your comment out there to the side. It should be four million, not five million, unless we adjust it.
Okay. And then I'll look at that as far as the total, if you're looking, but capital projects, alright. I didn't update this from yesterday, but I'll just go out here, it's probably pretty close. What I understood, I didn't hear yesterday, but. This was the cost, two point four, and if you added the fourth floor, it's going to cost six hundred fifty-five from the last estimate. And those unforeseen things was four hundred thousand. So we were up to three point four, but I bet you that's exactly where we were yesterday too, without some of that stuff.
Yeah. But that doesn't include the two hundred twenty-five thousand for the architect.
No.
So that takes it to three point six. Or, there, there's a lot of variables there.
And did they ever break it down from that fourth floor? I didn't hear that yesterday.
Well, there was a, there was a deduct on the fourth floor to not finish it.
Right.
So they had a deduct there, but the rest of it was to finish it, but.
But specifically what it would cost to just add that four?
I think that.
Like they did before.
The cost was definitely, and it may not be the six fifty-five, I thought they said maybe it came down a little bit, but not going to come down that much, but. If you're ever going to build a fourth floor, you do it now and not later. It's just my opinion.
So what I have put.
So actually, it's gone down, just for the record.
Total revenue?
The number she used has gone down. So it's actually, for twenty thirteen, it was twelve-six.
So what I.
Because it does not include the carry forward.
What I have put in there, using the receiver ship and putting the whole capital in there, I got to the three million four.
Perfect.
Okay, but.
But we have another million dollars if we need it. Because you have a five million contingency.
Okay, we're not balancing to anything. This poor lady has to balance the whole job. I'm just plugging numbers in here, I'm just giving you.
Kristen, do you remember when you, me, and Jenny.
We said this.
We said two-five.
Two-five extra.
And that did not include receiver ship, because we were talking just reserve at that point.
I think.
I don't think we include receiver ship in that number.
As far as we were concerned, it was.
Separate.
No.
It was included.
Because we, we consider the receiver ship reserve, no matter how you look at it, because really, there's no restriction on how you, how you spend it. We've just always accounted for it in a separate line item. And of that six fifty you have in there, you've already gained cover.
Two hundred thousand.
Right, so it's four fifty.
Yeah. So really, you're not.
No, well, you're at three-four, but it does include the architects. I mean, we would have to pay the architect part out of that too.
Okay.
So, again, that's all up to you guys. I did put that hazardous waste thing back in there. I think that was a three-year contract. Huh? You don't want it there, where you want it?
Uh, we can move it to the ground, but doesn't vary in line if you remember.
Yeah, and it says not, not a city grant anymore, but.
No, I got it up and running, but we still have to function it or to haul off and stuff. You would not believe how many people go through that thing. Of course, we probably don't believe how many people go through the, over there, your tree recycling stuff. Holy cow.
What, where does that, where does that put our, our bottom number?
I have no idea.
Because you can't see it, you can't get all the searches from general fund together.
We're only doing our, our parts of it.
Okay.
But you got an idea of where it's going to be?
Well, I think she's going to have a very hard time balancing that.
At, at, with those.
With these two in there.
Okay.
That contingency would have to come further, further down. So if that's where you want to leave it, that's where to go, and that just kind of explains.
Well, Chris, if you really want to look at the fourteen amended budget total for general accounts.
Where are you at?
Eight-six at the bottom.
Right, on what was it? Which line?
Fourteen amended budget there, total for general accounts, you can see that you guys have added.
Eight-six.
Nine-seven.
Okay.
Right, because of the one time out.
Right. So just keep in mind that they all change a little.
Right, but we've added one point one.
One point one to get a three point five million dollar project.
And we all, we did that because we actually came down with contingency. We were at six point six, we're down to five.
Right.
Plus the carry forward, no, carry forward is about the same.
Make sure when it's at eight, you use.
Ninety-six to ninety-nine to one hundred.
Make sure your general account total pulls the right cell.
I, one-one, yeah, it should be. I think it's because that came down. Otherwise, it really would have went up more.
So then you get your revenue difference then.
Can I play with this or not?
You can, but it won't save it.
That's perfect.
You have to save it.
I don't want to save it.
Dale said it would.
Because I want to see something here.
Revenue actually went down too.
Yeah, the revenue went down among you two.
So if I do a four hundred thousand dollar contingency, I'm just playing, just, no more now, okay? Don't make these changes, just listen. If I do a four hundred thousand dollar contingency and I take out capital improvement project and receiver ship to zero, on the basis that this is next year, does that make sense? We go from eight-six, nine-seven to five-three. That's how much the general accounts change.
Okay, you gotta tell me again, I'm sorry.
If I take the contingency to four million, okay, just hypothet, I'm, I'm not, I'm just hypothetically. And then I zero capital improvement projects and receiver ship, just make them zeros. Look what your bottom does, five-three-two-five.
But you still need to compare.
We cut general account spending by three million dollars.
But compare your contingency to your carry forward.
Cut it by more than that, you cut it by four point four.
And past years, Kristen, I don't know what he's talking about.
Not one year.
Are you projecting the carry forward?
If you say nine-seven.
Seven hundred thousand.
We leave those in at five, we're at nine-seven.
So there's your difference.
So cash forward I make.
So cash forward, you were at seven at the beginning of the year.
So I'm going to make it.
Balanced budget where you were only spending what you took in during the year and you were carrying forward the same amount to the next year.
I'm, I'm.
Your contingency would be seven also. So you're actually spending down your cash by the. So you're actually spending down your cash by the three million, and doing what you're doing.
Right. It's a one-time expenditure.
But what he's, if I'm hearing Mark correctly, we're spending, so if our contingency was four, like Debbie played in there, and then our, our expense for next year go to five point three, we could add our, add that money back into our contingency next year. Based on everything, if everything stayed the same.
And all the other departments stayed, well, I'm not understanding, because-
So, so here's what I did, I took, I went through and did the whole thing. I went to the top and the bottom. It's next year, okay? Our cash forward next year is four million dollars. So it balances that number just, and receivership zero, because we spent it all theoretically. That shows our general account revenue total at seven two. And it shows our general account expenditure total at five three. It's a two million dollar surplus.
If you take out contingency totally in the expense and you're coming out with what? And you're putting that capital back in there?
What? I kept four million in contingency. I took cash forward and contingency and put them at the same number, four million. And I know I got something wrong with this and I can't think of what it is.
You do, because look at, look at-
So I got four million there, I got four million there, right?
Yeah.
So we're at fourteen or fifteen, Kristen?
Uh, if you look at fourteen, go back up Debbie to the total revenue in fourteen.
There's the count, there's fourteen.
No, I want to see total.
Total revenue.
So see, you were at eleven to balance the budget.
Right there.
So that eleven offset your eight. So in general accounts, you bring in way more revenue than you actually spend in that department.
Right.
Because you're covering the expenses of the entire general.
But, but we're watching the, that eleven includes seven million in cash forward, a number which has been growing every year.
Right.
So if you take that seven million down to four million, because you spent it out on one-time money.
Okay, so that's how you're getting?
You're, you're still, theoretically, it shouldn't be a problem, because you're still generating- Change the receivership to zero in twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Right? Up, go up to revenue. And turn it to, receivership to zero. There.
Nope. Oh, yeah.
So if you go down just a little farther, it should say seven two two, I got seven two two six five six three.
Yep.
And I've got the outflow to make it balance, the balance outflow at five three two seven. So it works, unless I'm missing something, which I probably am, don't get me wrong, but it works. It shows that we don't negate out our contingency.
Well, and you're assuming everything else in every other department stays the same.
And I've got two million dollars a cushion. Between seven two.
That's the way I'm, I'm seeing it too. I mean, you have an extra two million dollars-
Cushion.
The next year to put back into contingency.
Right.
So you reduce your contingency in one year, but then it, you go back to six million the next.
Yes. What I'd like you guys to do, if you can, because I don't disagree, I think there's something wrong with what I'm doing here.
Yeah.
But, this, you know, I make a glib statement that's, that's meant facetiously, spreadsheet doesn't lie.
Well, you're assuming, you're assuming that it got spent between fourteen and fifteen, is what you're saying.
I'm, what I'm doing is I'm saying that if you imagine that twenty fifteen's actually twenty sixteen, okay? So this last year, twenty fourteen's twenty fourteen, next year we build the full project.
But in your assumption here, you're saying you've already built it.
Right.
Because you've already spent it between fourteen and fifteen, so you're saying you've spent it in fourteen.
Well, I'm saying-
Spent in fifteen.
Alright, theoretically, that top line should say, in that yellow column should say sixteen now, instead of fifteen.
Well, let us run it out.
Does that make sense? I'm jumping forward a year without creating all new columns, I'm just jumping-
Right, but that's where your two million is not going to go back in in fifteen. He, his assumption is that it got spent in fourteen. So he's doing fifteen's budget like it's out already, so you don't have an extra two to add back in.
So what I-
It's spent and it's gone.
What I'm saying is, is-
Right, well, you spent the money, but you're still going to have the revenue coming in in sixteen, that's going to be, what, eight?
Seven million.
Seven million dollars, and your expenses are only five point three.
But of that expense-
But, I, just, just take a look at it and see, I mean, maybe, maybe we're off.
But that extra two is what covers the other departments. That's why you had the eleven and the eight previously.
Right, there's three million dollar difference there.
Right.
Well, less than that, two million something.
But we spend that within the other departments.
Right.
It's not just this one part.
So there's not, I mean, you don't balance this budget to itself.
I, I understand that.
But I'm saying that there's not a two million that goes back in, like Chris thinks there is.
But, but that two million makes the budget work. The rest of the budget, the other departments work. And I still have the two million, after spending all that. I still have the two million.
But there's not an additional two.
So any growth we get at all fills the, starts to fill the contingency.
Yes.
With assumption nothing else changed.
Since we've grown at five hundred, since we've grown at five to six hundred thousand a year, every year.
I'm not projecting that this year, we could quite a bit, I'm sure.
It, at the risk of offending you, and I don't mean to, every year you guys project we're not going to grow it. Every year, every budget that's come down from the auditors office-
It's always, it's always in the budget as a deficit, but when we projected the end of the year, so when we move our annualized to where it should be, we're projecting that big surplus, I'm not projecting that big of a surplus this year.
Right, but last year when we sat here, it was the same thing. It's been that way every year, every year we've sat here, and you haven't been in many of these meetings, but every year you sat here, we've said, how big's the surplus going to be? Last year it was nine hundred thousand dollars, and Debbie always says, oh, and there's no way it's going to be that. It's going to be way less this year, I mean, we'd be lucky to have a surplus. Whammo, nine hundred thousand dollars! And I know now where that's coming from!
Boy, that's fun.
And how do you think we made it through those lean years?
Which is, but, which is fine, but all I'm saying is, is it's impossible, I think right now, based upon track records, for you, or you, or us to be saying, this trend is over.
No, I'm not saying it's over, I'm saying that we adjusted a lot in last year's budget, because we know the surplus has been there, then I, I'm saying it's probably going to be about half of what we have been experiencing, because we've been trying to budget better and see if we can get that surplus out of there.
What I would like you guys to do, and I'd like it, and I'm sorry I'm asking for something, but I, I think we need it. Um, before next week, if possible, our next meeting, can you guys figure out if we take three and a half million out, cash, one time, what does it do to this?
I haven't seen anyone else's budget yet.
Well, I, my point being, well, assume everything's going to get held flat, all expenditures are flat. Just do zero growth, zero revenue, you know what I mean? No growth in anything, no growth in revenue, no growth in expenditures. And then let's see what that does to the budget. We got to have something to work off of. And I look at the numbers, and I will tell you right now, I look at the numbers and I see that there's enough money there, it's not a problem. You guys are kind of pushing back on that, Debbie's pushed back very-
I definitely think there's two and a half, I just don't know where the additional-
Million dollars.
They under in-
The million dollars, we're going to call it three, let's just use three five as the number, for today's purposes.
Good with that, go at the top.
And-
So it's, it's that additional million that's in-
I will tell you where I'm at right now. I've looked at this, you and I have argued about it, I've looked at it extensively, I think the money's there. I don't see that it's a problem. I've gotten extensive pushback from her, I'm getting soft pushback from you.
It's going to get more.
So, here, I'm going to, I'm going to play lawyer and say, prove to me I'm wrong.
I'm just saying I don't know that I can prove to you next week that you're wrong.
Zero growth, revenue, zero growth expenditure, prove to me I'm wrong. That's all you need, I think, to do it.
But I, I think your assumption, yeah, I think your assumption there is totally opposite, that there's zero growth, revenue, zero growth.
Right, but, but my assumption, I agree, my, that assumption is not a hundred percent on. That assumption's ninety-nine percent on.
So what other assumptions do you want? Because you're not going to be able to predict what's going to happen. So if you go ten percent this, or negative ten percent that, you're just saying zero, zero, what happens?
We, we use, we use that long-term project spreadsheet for law enforcement fund, and we make all sorts of really big decisions on that fund. And we put in a set of assumptions to it, okay? And we're working off of it.
Right.
And we don't update it until we have full data, and then we update it. So you're not going to have-
You never use zero growth on expenses and that.
We use zero growth on sales tax.
Yeah, revenue.
On revenue, and we use two percent on expense.
Yeah.
Which we've held at. And we've worked it, and we've worked that line, and we've used that as a twenty year, well, it's a fifteen year out.
Yeah.
That, that we're working with. And, you know, we need to make a decision on this building project sooner as opposed to later. We can't wait till January to find out what the numbers are. We miss a whole building season.
Well, I'm not saying January either, but I haven't received any budget that I've seen.
Assume that everyone is going to ask for the earth, the sun, and the moon, and assume that the three misers, also known as the three wise men, also known as the three magi.
Now you're just getting out of control.
But, but assume, you know, you know, I know what everybody's budget's going to look like, you do too. Everybody's going to ask for more money. There hasn't been a year yet that everybody hasn't asked for more money.
More people.
And, and you guys always come down with a budget to us that has more money being spent, okay? And then, by and large, the dirty secret is, by and large, we take your budget and we start cutting out of it. Because you guys are spend thrifts up there.
No, no, we give them back what they asked for.
So-
I was going to say, last year you gave it all back.
Yeah, we gave the department back.
So, you know, in the end, I think, we need to see what happens, can we do this project? Boom, we're done.
But I want you to realize, general fund is the hub of this county. It's the hub of the finance of this county. All these other special funds, if they have trouble, they're coming to us in this fund. Sales tax, we, we know we're done there. Law enforcement, we funded a little bit, we fund that, but we would also have to fund that some more if something major happened. So I think general fund is the hub, you know, of what we do here, so that, I guess that's what I'm hesitant.
Sure. Look, I, I asked for a request. I'll tell you where I'm at. I am next Wednesday, okay? And I don't know where these two guys at, because we have not discussed it at all. And they will both agree we have not discussed it all. Next Wednesday, I'm prepared to vote to authorize the going forward on the project. And we won't be able to enter into contracts until much later in the year, obviously. But I want to get the design work, I want to get construction document done, I want to move forward on the project. I'm ready to vote for that now, because that's a minimal cost, and it doesn't commit us to spending on the project.
Just gets it ready for bid.
Gets it ready to go.
When we decide to go, we can pull the trigger.
Proceeding with the architect's contract.
Yeah, to go to the next stage, which is prepare the construction documents. Take us to the point where we can say, bid it or don't bid it. I mean, I'd rather do that today and get it going. At the same time, that it gives you more time to prepare these numbers. If you're uncomfortable with us proceeding to do the construction documents, either one of you all, I'm willing to wait a week, but I want proof I'm wrong then.
I want to make sure we put it on the agenda. So, like, next week, that's when I would rather vote on it, not today.
Actually, this doesn't, to move to the next stage doesn't require a formal resolution or anything. We just need to give, to say that to the contractors, or to the architects, the plans you've presented proceed to construction.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm leaning that way. I just, we got a lot of information yesterday, and so, give us a week to chew on it. And I really think we need to sit down and figure out where we're going to put everybody. And the other thing is, a lot of feedback I'm getting, or pushback I'm getting, is adding another courtroom. So something I'd like to throw out there is, we give them this great big courtroom, but maybe we take one of the small ones away, and make it other office space. So they still have four courtrooms.
We're going to get another judge.
That's what they say, I don't know.
We're going to get another judge, we don't know where to put them.
Well, I don't know.
As long as we have enough room to fit everybody else and have room for future growth, I mean, that's, that's going to be my big one. But I, I have, I have concerns, I mean, I trust Debbie and I trust Kristen. And use whatever numbers that you feel comfortable with, but I'd like to see where we're going to be in sixteen, okay? Assuming we spend three point five in fifteen, where does that get us in sixteen? And, and does it give us any extra money to build our contingency backup?
So where are you going with, like, furnishings and everything for that building?
Well, that's why we're using the higher end number, three five.
So three five is your projection?
Well, we've already pulled out two hundred for the architect's fees. The high end of the bid is three five. We haven't yet bid a project that's come in at the high end. So if there's some cushion in that number.
I mean, as far as furnishing is going, I, I mean, I think we're going to reuse what we got, a lot. I mean, the assessor's moving out of Carnegie. I mean, but the other, the other caveat to that is, is that are we going to have to remodel some space in here to get everybody where they need to be? And I think that may come into play too.
And we, and I don't know that we will all have to remodel.
Right. But I mean, that's something we need to think about before we-
There's two options, you know, if we move the prosecutor out of upstairs, over to there, then we, and we move the assessor up there, we do have to do some remodeling.
Right.
On the other hand, if we just move the assessor straight over there, we don't have to do anything with upstairs.
I don't think that solves, I don't think that gets us where we want to be.
Gets us out of Carnegie.
Right.
But then at some point in the future, we have to look at removing people around. So it's one move or two moves.
And I don't, I don't know that you moved the whole prosecutor from upstairs over there, I think you moved part of them.
Yeah, that's another option.
I don't think you can get them all out of there.
I know, we had them, we have somewhere in here, and I couldn't find it, I was looking for it, Debbie didn't.
Still leaving up there, I was going to move the assessor over here, if you don't.
And was the library willing to give us anything for Carnegie?
We haven't negotiated anything.
But I mean, did that seem like that was on the table, or, or were they just looking for a gift?
Right now, they're just looking at the concept. Heck, I'm not sure that's a gift. It's kind of like the flaming brown bag on your front doorstep. I'm not so sure that's a gift.
But you're pretty sure-
But you got something!
Well, that's not even a good analogy. My grilled cheese and steak analogy was just good. It fills your belly.
I mean, I, I think three five has got to be the upper limit. I mean, well, you don't think we can get there at three five, so I mean, how, how do we go even above that?
But I just know that projects have always led to, we're going to do this, while that leads to this, and that leads to-
That's exactly the discussion when you got to sit down and talk about where we're going to move people, because it doesn't just involve building that, and getting a courtroom there. Then when we start moving people, the ambulance service, look how much they spent on their furnishings and stuff, and rebuilding everything.
New workroom is going to be new furniture, it's not going to be-
Most of that's going to be included in there, we put a base price in there, and any bells and whistles, then they'll take care of that, of that, but as far as, when we move the assessor, we're going to have to get, I, I venture to say we're going to get mostly, you know, new stuff to partitions, or however they would set that up here, or over there. I mean, they got systems that you don't have to build wall.
So, so there's two parts to this too, which is, um, if we go forward on the construction project, nobody's moving till, best case, what was it, end of next year?
Sixteen.
Most likely, nobody's moving till early sixteen. So, there is some time next year to figure out the logistics of the moving.
And we'll have money in capital to-
And we'll have more money in capital.
That's the last year of the five year.
What?
Sixteen?
No.
No, fifteen.
Sixteen's the last year.
Sixteen's the last year.
Yeah.
But next year's fifteen.
Right.
He was talking about next year, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll have some money in capital that we could buy FFNE out of, or, or even into sixteen.
Before spanning over two fiscal years though, I mean, that spreads out too.
And, so, so there's a lot of moving parts here, but the big moving part is figuring out how to fund the construction. That's the big moving part. And, like I said, I look at the numbers and the money's there. You guys are hesitant.
Well, I'm sure the largest portion of the money is there. I'm not convinced that we have three five.
And-
So that's, I mean, I, I'm with you, two five definitely, three probably, the other half a million, I'm kind of struggling with. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
And maybe that's the discussion, you know, but, but in the end, I think, I, I find that three five is doable. In my look, running the numbers, and I've been playing with them now for a week, since I kind of heard what the initial number was. In my look, running the numbers and I've been playing with them now for a week since I kinda heard what the initial number was looking to be. And I've played with them. I've dug through. You know, our old budgets, our spreadsheets. I find that it works. If you guys have, you know, if there's, if there's a case to be made the other way, let's make the case. And then we, you know, we end up making decisions. All we can do is ask for as much information as you can give us. Okay, I think we've buried this particular budget pretty hard for today.
You only have one more.
Yep, and that's the other big one, but it's, um, sales tax.
You should start with the hard ones.
You know, that's a good point. In the future, you should start with the hard ones because.
Before we get tired.
Then we'll be burned out on the easy ones. You can just plow through them.
Well, it's just the sales tax, so. Capital's the sales tax. So we can look at the five year look or we can just go.
Yeah, the five year's kinda worthless, I hate to say.
You just hurt my feeling.
Well, no, I mean, for purposes of figuring out what we're budgeting for next year, it's kinda hard to do it.
Well, but, okay, I'm not gonna, because the other way it's harder to look at, because all you're looking at is numbers.
Right.
So we're gonna go here.
Which is what we're, which is what we're sending up to Kristen. We're not sending pictures.
You mean we have pictures somewhere? I didn't get that copy.
Okay, well, I have to look at this, you know what I'm talking about. So right now.
Both of them. Let's all be friends.
So you on a five year Debbie?
Momma dead, are you?
So.
So at the end of this year, assuming we get all the projects done that we have, we should be.
Where you at?
Right here is all about this year.
This is where, I don't even know why I'm trying to follow her up there.
Why are we on this one? Is this the one we're working on? Okay, hang on. I thought we were on the other one.
If you want.
I thought we were on the other one. So we're doing courthouse budget for five years?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get it up. Hang on. It's trying to decide whether it wants to let me see it or not. Okay, now which tab am I hitting?
Two thousand. You doing two thousand twelve to sixteen Debbie?
Now, how do I lock this one?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, if you can do the same thing, it's just gonna be harder because her screen's not a widescreen. So you have to scroll over.
Okay, I got it. I got it. It's working for me.
Yeah, if you scroll over a couple, you're gonna have to carry on.
So you're saying that, what are you anticipating is cash forward end of the year?
Two hundred thousand, two hundred twenty-two thousand.
And where's that at on this spreadsheet?
It's on ninety-two at the end.
I got it. Okay.
Okay. So assuming again, all the projects that we have in Cumberland and where we are, so then in next year, you'll have the two hundred and twenty-two thousand plus an estimated eight hundred thousand, keeping everything flat. So you'll have a million.
So you're going back up to the top in fifteen?
So a million dollars, give or take, next year.
And so going down from there, if, I'm sorry.
You didn't carry that two hundred twenty-two thousand forward?
I will in the formula, but just keep in mind you got a million. So you look down below at all the requests, now starting at ninety.
Now, now we're getting all the requests.
Now we're getting to the million, spending it. I just kinda put them in here, so I didn't know. You heard the request from our department, then I think I got them all in here, which is juveniles, which is the health department. Which is, you all, what was the juvenile security? I had put the camera system in there. You know, we talked about Sonatrol and how their camera system was outdated. I don't know if that hundred thousand, and if you.
That's off by magnitude of one. It lays, it's at least off by ten, hundred, ninety thousand dollars.
Talking about security at juvenile?
Doing Sonatrol. They have the whole building.
Right.
And we talked, we're spending now eight hundred dollars a month on maintenance. If we go in there and bid it out and do a new system, we're gonna have to buy out new hardware.
Maybe.
And when that new hardware was bought ten, twelve years ago, twenty years ago?
He spent twenty years.
We spent about eighty thousand.
Yeah, but but it, so much this depends on, I don't know, it's.
Okay, well, you tell me what to put in there. I don't care.
Okay, a hundred thousand, I see it, okay.
I don't know, we talked about parks, but we do have ten thousand in there for parks, not in general.
Right.
And now I just heard with the GIS this morning.
Right.
And so I put that in there and then down.
Although I don't know, I have, I have heartache over GIS coming out of capital. We've talked about, I've had heartache over that for years. Because it's not, what's, what's the product I'm getting?
Maps.
Uh, does, do we depreciate that person?
Yeah, probably can, cause of the whole. Intellectual information stuff that they've now added, you know, it's more of a.
I don't know that you can depreciate it. I think it's an expense.
Cause we kinda do with the software one.
Yeah, software now. I don't know, that would probably do. That would be a question of what he's keepers. I have not addressed depreciating. I know.
A lot of these issues.
We actually are depreciating the overall.
Are we? A lot of these, I don't mean this in a bad sense whatsoever, but I'm the wrong person to be sitting here for some of this discussion now.
Well, don't try to get out of here.
Well, no, I just mean, I I think, I think figuring out what you wanna do next year in capital sales tax is Sam's job, not mine.
When, of course, right now, all we're doing is place setting.
Just place that money.
Well, yeah, this is just a, a list of, and a lot of this is Greg's.
Then then what I would do is, my suggestion, just put two lines. Expenditure and contingency. Expenditure, eight hundred thousand, contingency, two hundred thousand.
Well, now we can go back to the other side.
Does that make sense?
Show you that one.
And then we can come back in and add whatever the individual projects are, because all we have to do is say that they're.
Is that a question? Second.
Well, okay, here's that then. Here's this budget, the eight hundred thousand coming in. I did reduce our carried forward to a hundred thousand, assuming there will be other projects that come up between now and the end of the year. So we have about nine point four.
Nine point four million. Wow.
No, no. Nine hundred and fourteen thousand.
Hey, I just found the money, guys!
Sorry, misspoke.
All right, nine hundred and fourteen thousand.
And I did put, we'll have to up that increment financing there, the transfer, that's the three percent out of this fund, part of this fund.
So do I go to seven hundred, do I need to go down to like line?
Seventy would be it.
But what's the stuff for animal on ninety?
Are you, I switch, oh, I'm sorry. That's Roden, Roden Bridges.
Ninety is Roden Bridge? That says to animal shelter, line ninety. I'm on line ninety.
Line ninety down Debbie.
Just forget, just forget that. Just go to sixty-two, because we have nothing in ninety down there.
All right, sixty-two. Got it. What's the transfer fund? Oh, three percent admin, contingency, two hundred thousand.
Computers, I put thirty-five, assuming that we get our whole financials paid this year. But we won't, okay.
I think what you got there's fine.
No, I'm sorry.
I think that's perfect to send to the auditor.
The only thing I would like is if there are actual automobiles that you're thinking about.
We've not received any.
Health department question, two of them.
Yeah, but we never put any of that stuff into the budget till we get much farther along. I don't think we've ever sent you vehicles before, have we?
I've always broke them out.
I think you've always, I think you've always put them in. I think we've sent them up without, I think we've sent them up without vehicles and you've put in vehicles, as I recall.
Well, she probably wants.
Cause you have the sheriff's proposal, you have stuff that we don't have.
I guarantee you that every time we do the budget, there's about sixty new cars that have stars on the side that I didn't remember.
Trucks now too.
We got the best looking sheriff cars out there. You see them?
Trucks too.
Trucks too, yeah.
I think I better, I think I better increase this.
I think we got one older one out there in Warrensville.
That was before they signed the contract.
It's still in real good shape.
Half of it do it signing? Part of half of it was.
They need to give them the most stands against it. It wasn't like driving as much. Chargers, isn't that what they're marking?
Take their air conditioner gear out of.
We're getting farther down in the weeds on this than we usually do, aren't we?
Hmm, at this time of year, yeah.
We got. We got this one big project. I think that's what's got us so far in the weeds. I think, don't put anything in vehicles. Please don't put anything in vehicles at this point. Because if we put a dollar in there in vehicles, somebody's gonna come back and say, you promised us a vehicle. And I know who will come and say that. You do too. Up, not saying anymore. I would suggest, and Kristen, if you wanna break it out, you know, you have, you have more information at this point than we do.
Or if you don't, if you wanna bring it back and not, you don't wanna make that decision and you just believe it all in capital, we'll move it.
Cause we'll go through and we'll move the stuff where we upload it.
All right, can we think of anything else?
I'd like to see a capital request by, from all departments.
Yeah, cause if that isn't it yet, cause I can guarantee you she'll get more one of that.
And I mean, not that you have to put it in there, but I mean, we've got all our buildings, but I'd like to see a whole sheet that just has all the capital requests.
Normally what I do is if someone has requested, your departments are hard because they don't put it necessarily dollar number in their budget, because they come to you with a list. So theirs are hard. I don't, I don't pull them out. But any other department, if they request something capital wise, I pull it out of their regular budget and I give you a list of things that I pulled out of general fund or somewhere that I will attach to the front of our sales tax fund. I do not specify who gets what. These are the requests from sales taxes by the other departments. I don't always do that with your departments, because I don't get a dollar amount.
And you don't have to do, I mean, everybody's presented to us, so we know what those are, but, I mean.
But yeah, you do get that.
I mean, if you got another sheet from other departments that have cars from the sheriff, and I like to see who's requesting what in that dollar amount.
Now, the sheriff's a little different, only because we've put capital in their budget the last two years, so it's been included in their capital.
Some of that, right, but we approved a hundred and forty thousand out of capital for those trucks.
You after me though.
Right. I understand that, I understand that, but I mean, they, I guarantee you that they're not gonna stop it.
So let's.
Appropriations that we get.
What what I would prefer to do is just, the way you've got it right now Debbie, send it up. And then when we get it back in November, we can actually make the, cause by then we'll have a lot better handle on a lot of issues that we don't have a handle on right now.
Two of the big questions, you want all the employee salary to remain the same to go up to, from this year to next year, to go up to the audit?
We have never approved a pay raise at this stage. We always do that. That discussion's not even discussed generally until after January one, when you have the cash forward.
I I like doing it that way. Keep it doing it the same way we've been doing. I don't know, Chris, you got any additional input on it or?
I'm good with that, so.
What about the new employee request? In or out?
Out.
To go up to the auditor.
What what new employee requests do we have?
Well, I don't know what I can think of right now. EMS.
You had a part timer under for.
Yeah, and a part timer for two.
I don't know if it's better to leave it out and then.
I would like to keep my preference, EMS in. I don't know about the part time purchasing. My inclination is to keep it in, cause we can take it out. And allow us to at least have a knowledge of what that does with the budget. And Kristen gets done with it.
I think to have a true picture of what we requested, be good to be in.
We can take them out.
Either way, because if you see the budget here and you can, oh, well, we got a little to work with there, we can put a person in. Or you can say, they're in there and this number's not jiving, we gotta take it out. I just, I'm fine with putting it in.
That's fine. We'll be able to see, we'll be able to see the difference in it. I mean.
Put it in.
I think it's a lot easier from our budgetary perspective to take it out. Cause it allows us to balance if we need to, than it is to stick it in, because that can have implications in other parts of the budget. On a, on a negative side that we don't necessarily factor in.
And social security, I can figure, retirement, I can figure, health insurance. What I had done was left it currently at the same rate it is. What happens? I'm not sure yet, so.
We gotta wait till we get that information.
So are you comfortable sending it up at current?
When is that, by the way?
Well.
I'm not following, sending it up at current, explain that again.
Wait, do the health insurance costs the same?
Leave it the same.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll have another meeting, especially since the reinsurance is scheduled. I think we're scheduled for the middle of September.
I think we projected that there would be three people that went to reinsurance. Was that our historic trend?
I think that's what we had figured, three.
And I think that was historic.
Yeah, but that's where the pricing came from, where we went to social insurance.
I think it was three. Was it three or five?
I'm pretty sure it was three.
It was three. It just runs in my mind.
Well, we were projecting that there would be three people that would get into reinsurance.
Based on all the.
Based on our past.
And we were trying to decide between fifty and seventy-five or fifty, was it fifty and seventy-five we were looking at? That was the number we were talking about.
Okay.
What else?
I think that's it.
You got enough to send it?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Okay. You guys got anything else? You burnt out now? That was two and a half, I wish that was a two and a half hour long meeting today, following a three and a half hour meeting yesterday.
This was the easy part too.
Can I make a suggestion about your agenda?
Depends.
The schedule things a little better, like, you know, the second reading of budget adjustments, wasn't those the unfinished business that they would go like towards the top? Some of those things, Betsy had to sign, they need contracts.
My preference of how we organize the agenda is, if we got a lot of people we're paying to be here. Particularly if we're actually paying them to be here, that I want them out of the room as fast as I can. It's like, let's stop the clock.
Well, that's kinda what I'm thinking, that some of those smaller things that take very little time should be moved up to the front.
But for example.
Health department.
For example, we're paying for Betsy whether she's here or she's over there, okay? There are all those architects and engineers and all that, that clock's running. And when they walk out the door, the clock stops and I don't have to write a check anymore. I'm just looking out for your bottom line. And and that is how we try to do it. We try to take the stuff that has people that are, that's gonna cost extra, the longer they wait, the more they, you know. They always tell us, well, we really like, not like to wait, and then they kinda go. We can hang out for a couple hours. You're paying me.
I mean, I agree with you a little bit too. I mean, we're, we're paying both people, so I mean, yeah, Betsy can wait, but we are paying her to sit here rather than to be over there working, so.
Well, it just seems silly sometimes when we get to the end and the end goes like bam, 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 bam. Those things could have just been.
Yeah, but yesterday I even emailed during the meeting that we need to look at trying to do that, but like Mark said. Whenever we told them they could be added to the agenda, we told them this was gonna be first, they're gonna be after, it's gonna be a lengthy agenda, so, you know, they had heads up. And I kinda forgot about that. There was an email that.
And I know that Greg is probably listening, but they're the worst about it of all. Because they come up with stuff that has to immediately be approved, you know? They don't come up, they don't frequently come up with stuff that, well, can we wait till we find an agenda that's not full? It's always, I need on the agenda immediately. And we warn, I mean, I don't know how many emails I sent this last time around saying, this is a, the first item on the agenda is really second, was that facilities discussion is gonna be a long item. Are you sure you wanna go on this day? Oh, yeah, oi, yeah, that's day one.
I think that came out at the last minute. Everybody else was already on it, so.
We knew it was on there for a long time, cause that was the date we had picked. Okay, what else?
Another thing, I heard you guys talking earlier about the committees, so I'm sure you're talking to the, do you want us to give you a list of the committees and what you guys are all on, so you can work that out with Sam and.
That's probably a good idea.
I mean, we need to, we ran some ads to, for volunteers. None.
This your first year for salute, or is this your second year? Can you as chair this year?
This was my second year.
Are you wanting off of, I mean, we can rotate so that it doesn't, so you don't get burnt out on it, because it is fine once in a while, but it is also nice to be able to come downtown and enjoy or go out to the farm and shoot your fireworks if you want or.
It it doesn't really matter. I mean, we can talk about that.
I'll leave that up to you. We'll leave it be, but.
Sam might, probably knows Sam might wanna do it.
Yeah. So.
Just looking through some of our capital stuff and where are we at on that Cobb property?
Waiting on an NFA.
Do they think that's gonna happen anytime soon or?
Well, they, they thought, it was a great story. This is DNR at its finest. They, DNR sent them a letter. They addressed all the items in the letter. They sent the follow-up report from the engineer back saying they addressed all the items in the letter and DNR came back and said, oh, we got a couple other items. So they're addressing the couple of other items that DNR's come up with. DNR wanted another, you know, another monitoring well, they want, you know, you know how you've dealt with DNR.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you ask them. Yeah, you ask them for help, and they won't even come out and see you. I had to do some water quality testing, I'm like, well, send somebody out and show me how to do this. Because I kept getting all these particles in my water samples, because trying to pull it out of the, basically the dirt and the leaves and everything else, you got too many solids.
Well, no shit. Tell me how to up to!
So, so what do I do? So, I get a sample, and then I start filtering it through filters, and then I send it to them, and, and the test comes out fine.
Well, that's what I was having issues with that yesterday, when we saw about the solid waste thing. I don't know where that came from, why they were wanting to change, I really don't, and maybe I should go out there and sit down and talk to them. The day we had the meeting here, they explained to me, yeah, why it's a best practice, but why require, I talked to some plumbers last night, I said, can, would this be, would there be an advantage, they're going, no. Why would you do that? I'm going, because it's a best practice, not only is it, why would you have a lagoon if you're gonna have that? I said, okay, I said, that's all I know, I said.
I entertain motion to stand recess.
So moved.
Second.
All those fair say aye?
Aye.
Hoes, motion carries. Well, see you next week, have a happy, uh, happy Labor Day.
See you tomorrow morning.
He's not coming. I'll see you tomorrow morning.
I should be there.
He gets Labor Day, he's on vacation now.
We'll see how bowling goes.
Yeah, right.
So, boss.
You need some pencils? I've got a bunch of pencils. Do you use these a lot?
I do use pencils a lot, but.
You don't use the mechanical pencils, you like them?
Yeah, I write, I push too hard.
Okay, I'll bring some in.
So, looking at, uh, the encumbered amount, you've got, yeah, you've got that soft, uh, software in there, parent forty-one.
Oh, well, no wonder, that one has that. So, they're not very active, like they spent it all, and this year, that's why my carried forward would be right, so that would, then I wouldn't have to encumber it next year. Either way, if we don't pay it all, then it just comes in in the carried forward.
Now, is that, is that hardware and software, or?
Yes, that's.
That's everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Unless we get a wild hair, and unless we get into it, and we wanna expand to more employees, coming like you guys, and, and then, I think they'll cost everything like, uh, you would really, I mean, I like to scan a lot of stuff, so, like, when people are submitting their budget, it'll be right behind that line item of that new software, it's gonna be really, we won't look at spreadsheets anymore, in my mind, it'll all be through the system. And we can take it out of the system and drop it into the.
So, it'll be like a report generated from the system, it'll be real time?
Right. Like this is just, you know, spreadsheet.
So, it'll almost be like a, oh, I mean, I use QuickBooks, so it'll be like going in and generating a report, and you can pull and choose and pick the timeframe and whatever, and it builds a report right then.
And it'll drill all the way down to the actual check we cut, to the invoice behind it, right now, and I think, I think Debbie's obviously changed. But, um.
Debbie.
Over at EMS, because of the scanning, I want the departments to do it on, put it in as we go, everything's there, and we're ready, but we can.
I'll see y'all have a happy Labor Day.
Going away, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's gonna change, it's gonna change very good, it's just a matter of setting it up right, and hopefully, it works like it said it would, but we see it works, so. And other counties and cities are happy, so.
Yeah.
I just hesitate because of everybody else, which is.
Yeah.
I guess.
Across the hall. No, I was, Debbie, turn it off.
Turn it off.
Turn it off!